Can you order roll call?
Councilmember Mersch.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Proton Derringer.
Here.
Mayor Piper.
Here. All right, so for the pledge allegiance. Hi Leah, you want to?
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No presentations. Can we make a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Then someone make a motion to accept the blue folder items?
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. This is for public comments of things not on the agenda. Does anyone have any public comments that aren't on the agenda? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comments for not on agenda items and go to consent calendar.
I need the consent calendar.
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then we're going to go to commission item zoning case number 24-149, site plan review for construction and new grading, new garage with workshop, non-exempt grading and other improvements, conditional use permit, greater than 200 square feet, a variance of disturbed area, finding category exempt from CEQA.
Good evening, our will mayor, members of the council. Raina Shades, La Hare contracts senior planner with Willden, presenting three out Rider Road zoning case 24-149. Tonight before you have one variance, one conditional use permit and a site plan review. This was approved at planning commission in the August 19 meeting. The subject property you'll see under the star is zoned RAS1, one acre less property. Vicinity map, it's on the east side, or excuse me, the west side of Out Rider Road, just south of East Field Drive up on the screen. Further background, again, RAS1, less than an acre, the property is 38,000 square feet. So it's a very small property, well, it's a smaller property. There are two building pads, 14,000 where the house exists, and then 3,000 in the back where the proposed project before you tonight will be located. There's an existing 3,900 square foot house, attached 500 square foot garage. There was a pool and a barbecue area built in 2021 updating the property, 570 square foot pool, 145 square foot barbecue. Again, the applications before you are tonight are for site plan review one, to construct a new 825 square foot garage slash workshop. It's a mixed use project per our zoning code. It's also that it's over 200 square feet, has an accessory structure, so it requires a CUP. And the garage consists of, or the proposed mixed use structure consists of 547 square feet of garage, about two cars, and a 243 square foot workshop and potting area separated by a wall. There can be no access between the garage and the workshop per our code. The variance is for disturbance over 40%. The property is already at 53% with a little bit of, with about 19% for the proposed garage. It'll bring it up to 72, so that's what the application is tonight. The site plan you see up on the screen is, here's the proposed garage, 800 square feet. You'll note there is a proposed ADU, which is in, the intention of this garage is to be the parking for the ADU. The ADU here is just for reference only, per state law, the city has no discretion over the ADU. As part of the construction, the stable and set aside area are in the rear of the property. Again, the house 3,600, existing garage, 500 square feet, and the pool and the barbecue in the front complete the project. The project meets the remainder of the development code, including 20% max structural coverage, 16 is proposed. Total flat work 35 max, 13 is proposed. Lot coverage, structural and fat, flat work 35%, 24 proposed. Here's where they're requesting the variance, 45% disturbed, 72% proposed as discussed earlier, et cetera. This is the floor plan for the garage, workshop, potting area. This is the floor plan for the attached ADU that we saw in the site plan earlier. It's a one bedroom, family room bathroom. These are elevations that were already conceptually approved by the HOA, and their round style entry to the workshop, two door garage, and then the ADU on the left or south side of the property, rear of the property, west elevation. Again, the HOA has approved this conceptually with a requirement to remove the stable access from the eastman. It was going around the property. They wanted it to go up the driveway, be in front of the ADU to the rear of the property, so it kind of S curves through. If you look at the site plan, again, it used to go around, that was the access, but the ASOA wanted it to go through the property, S curve, and it has been adjusted, according to the applicant has agreed to that. Projects exempt from CEQA under 15303 class 3, new constructions, small single family homes. Therefore, staff recommends that the council receive and file the property owners here if you should have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
So if we didn't approve the garage, they'd still, or they could still build the ADU, right?
If you did not approve the garage, they could still. If you, if you did not, or if you took this under your jurisdiction and decided not to approve the garage, then the ADU would still be allowed to be constructed.
Any other?
I don't have, I just have a comment. On the slide that had the charts for the development table, yeah. If our copies could have what the maximums are on that left hand side. Ours didn't have that. I know, I see it's up there now, it would be helpful.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? And for some reason, I didn't get the plans. I mean, it was not the end of the world, but did anyone get plans?
No.
Nope. I mean, anyways, okay. We're going to open the public comments, is there any public comment? Oh, I didn't, usually they give us a giant.
Oh, we didn't have separate plans, I just said what I had in my bag.
Complained, but then they disappeared completely. All right, then we're going to, we're going to close the public comment. Does anyone make a motion?
I make the motion to accept, to receive and file.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, perfect. I just don't know for that, all of a sudden, we went from a million to nothing. Okay, all right. We're going to 12A, receive and file an update on emergency siren notification system project. Authorize the city manager to seek easement licensing from Rolling Hills Community Association. Thank you very much. And to propose locations and to provide directions on the third and/or fourth pole location.
Good evening, Mayor Piper, members of city council. This evening, the staff report will be presented by the management analyst, Ms Samantha Crew. Along with her this evening, we have two members of the HQE team. One is Kais, he is on the leadership team for HQE as well as our new project manager. If you recall, at the last status update, we shared that Charles, who was our project manager, would no longer be with us at this time. So Frank is also joining Kais this evening, and they'll be presenting in regard, in regarding the propagation, the methodology, and answer questions that have come up from residents and/or questions addressed by you. I also kindly remind the mayor that when we have questions from the public, if they can direct your questions to you, just to ensure that we capture the questions and we can bring back the HQE to address those accordingly. This is to ensure we keep a timely.
Good evening, Mayor Piper and city council. The city has worked to strengthen emergency communication capabilities, and since 2019, beginning with the block captain initiative, the city installed three outdoor siren poles in 2023, one at the city hall, the fire station, and the Crest Road east gate. System testing in the spring of 2025 revealed some sound coverage gaps due to the challenging terrain of the city, prompting the city council to direct staff to work with HQE to identify additional pole locations to close the, to close that gap. At the August 11 city council meeting, staff were directed to demonstrate the siren pole height to residents and the city council, and also identify alternative locations to the previously proposed ring bit cul-de-sac, explore the viability of a siren pole in the flying triangle, and to look at the upper South Field area as a potential location, and inquire about the installation of the safe network and camouflaging the poles. Here you can see is an image of the Upper Blackwater Portuguese Bend Garden Triangle at the proposed height of 50 feet. And as seen in the staff report, there were residents in this area that were opposed and supported the pole location. Here are the images of the Chesterfield cul-de-sac at the proposed height of 50 feet. As seen, again, in the staff report, you can see some feedback from the nearby residents. These viewpoints are from some of the houses nearby. Images from the viewpoint of nearby homes. Here we have the propagation map, and I believe this is going to link. It doesn't seem that it's linking, so I'll just describe this. But this is the propagation map for the LS 120 siren poles. And so currently, our poles are 120. You can see there is ample coverage in the area, the red area being at 95 dB, and the green area, which there really aren't many areas within the city boundaries that are 60 dB using the 120. And. Sorry, just skip to. About that. The next map you can see, and I can, I can go back and forth with this, and just know as well, our vendor HQE is here and will be pulling up the maps on their computer to further explore this. But back in April, HQE proposed an option. You know, they've proposed many different options, but one of those options were to use LS 30 speakers. And you can see between the two maps, sorry, that the 120, LS 120 has a lot more coverage than the LS 30. There is a cost increase to using the 120, which I'll get to in a moment. Identifying other sites. So the other sites, option one, was the ring bit location. This is the primary location that the vendor feels has the most adequate coverage. If that is not satisfactory to the council, there are a couple of other options. South Field and the ring bit intersection, there are two corners there that are decent. The, the sound propagation is not quite as good as ring bit though. The third option would be to put a pole in the flying triangle and somewhere in the upper region of South Field, potentially of Flying Main. Those locations have not had the viability explored, so we don't know. We haven't sent Dega Alert out or anything like that to those locations. But the third option obviously would mean two poles, which would mean double the cost. Staff are seeking direction, sorry, staff are asking the city council to provide direction on additional siren location selecting from these mentioned locations. These sites were selected on criteria including terrain, sound coverage potential, existing infrastructure and installation limits, and represent the most feasible options after an exhaustive multi-year search involving HQE and city staff and the RHCA and the residents. As you can see, the cost of camouflaging here, the siren poles, it's quite expensive to do the camouflaging. It's approximately $84,000 per pole for the total package. The cost of painting the utility box and the siren brackets, and then including painting the speaker array, is approximately $2,500 per pole. Landscaping around the pole is also a potential, and staff can return at a later date with some cost estimates for that. The safe network, it's coming soon. HQE currently is working in Paradise installing the system, and once they're finished with that project, they will be coming to Rolling Hills and installing it here. Residents will be responsible for paying for the units, which is $100 per unit. And HQE anticipates starting in the fall and completing the project in the new year, by the new year. And that would include having an ordering system for our residents, so it would be a QR code, they could go online and order these, the indoor units. The fiscal impact. So obviously, here are some images of the current siren poles. We've got the city hall, the Crest Road east gate, and the fire station. Expanding the coverage area with similar product with the LS 120 is 48,335 per unit, and this cost does not include the camouflaging. With the LS 300, sorry, LS 30, the cost per pole is $21,323 per pole. That, that estimate is for 30-foot poles. The coverage is not as great as using the 120. And with that, I will turn things over to HQE because they will be able to demonstrate the, on the map, just to see the expanse of the coverage. So just to reiterate, this evening, the staff are conducting, sorry, staff are asking city council direction for the following, to authorize the city manager to seek easement licensing from the RHCA for those two proposed locations, and provide direction on an additional siren pole with those three options, and provide guidance on the, on the visual strategy such as camouflaging. Interesting. I will hand it over to HQE now.
No clue how that happened, sorry.
Do you want to plug in your?
I'm going to be.
All right. Good evening. Thank you all for having us, and also, you know, before I begin, I just want to say it's been a kind of a long journey here so far. And our biggest motivation, our biggest goal here is to find something that the city council, the staff, and the residents of Rolling Hills define satisfactory, right? So our goal is to work with you all to help identify working site locations, things that the residents would, you know, be happy with, but also at the same time, provide you with all the expertise and knowledge that we have from the years in the industry to provide, you know, something that is robust and useful and helps prevent, you know, catastrophic kind of scenarios in that emergency type situation. So hopefully, the questions and answers and the things that we discussed today help us closer to that goal. And, you know, worst case scenario, I want to leave you with, that our team is here and ready to work with you all to help find a resolution and help get to the finish line. So thank you for this opportunity to help answer some of these questions, and looking forward to the discussions today. All right. Okay. So what I'm going to demonstrate right now is just the, the coverage maps that we've kind of discussed a little bit over time. So versus having a static image, what we want to do is show you in real time with the software that is modeling the sound propagation. Of course, in the disclaimer, right, sound propagation technology like this is cutting edge, right? There's not a whole lot of technology out there that can do this. And as a result, the, the, you know, the ultimate result is not perfect, but it's very, 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 very close, right? We've been able to pretty much reenact or re-verify these things on, in worldwide installations with, with actual measuring tools and measuring equipment and saw, and the effectiveness of what this modeling software tells us. So digging into this a little bit, right, the, one of the proposals that you discussed was the LS 30s. So when, we kind of originally approached with finding a solution to provide additional audio coverage. We, you know, of course, knowing and having worked with the city for quite a while now, we understood that the aesthetic and the height and the blocking and, you know, the views and that sort of thing was something of importance. And so the initial proposal was for the smaller LS 30 speakers on a smaller pole, right? Now, we did that as a, as a way to demonstrate, not that that would be the most viable solution, but that it would be a potential option, right? But it's not, from a, from a coverage standpoint, I don't think that it quite provides the, the city with everything that you're looking for. What you can see here is that the lower, the smaller poles actually do increase the volume, the audible coverage to the nearby, the folks that are nearby the towers, because the speaker is closer to the ground, right? And so as a result, it feels a little bit louder. But what that does is it impacts significantly the distance in which the audio can travel, and of course, the, the challenges become the terrain related issues, right? Where the lower the pole, the, 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 the less distance you're going to be able to have from an audible coverage perspective. So from looking at from the LS 30, you can see a significant amount of gaps that would still remain within the city if we went that route in that direction. The, the main proposal that I believe you guys were reviewing, the council's reviewing today is the current proposed locations with the three existing locations, another siren at the Chesterfield cul-de-sac, siren at the Upper Blackwater Portuguese Bend Road, and then the ring bit cul-de-sac. When looking at this, these are proposed, of course, at the 50-foot height. And again, the biggest reason why you want to go with the extra elevation is to ensure a larger kind of span where the audio can actually be disseminated. But also, as a result of the larger speakers, the, they're, in order to ensure that it's not too loud closer to the residents, that additional elevation is there to kind of help protect that. So it's kind of a twofold process as to why we, we proposed what we did. Looking down at the, at the current proposal, like Samantha was saying, is we're taking a look at this, you're seeing that the entirety of the borders within the city of Rolling Hills is looking at a minimum of 60, 70, I mean, 70-plus dB. Again, what does that mean, right? We, I think we've had these kind of discussions in the past, but ultimately, what that does is it gives us a perspective of, of just what the residents can expect here within the city, right? So by adding in the 3D modeling for estimated heights for the buildings in the city, we're able to see that, that we're going to be able to provide pretty ample coverage with these additional three sites. We've tested a lot of sites over the course of the last year or so. I think we've, I don't know the exact location, but 50, 50-plus locations. And it's not to say that these are the best locations and that, that, you know, they're not going to work anything else, anywhere else. But when we took into account things like the accessibility and being able to bring vehicles and work trucks into those areas, when we took into account elevation and where those things, where the, the towers would end up being and the amount of coverage that each individual you'd be able to bring, and then of course, the, the element of ensuring that there's no one area in the city that's responsible for broadcasting to the entirety of the city, right? So by, you know, the, the current proposed site locations as they are today are going to give the city of Rolling Hills the, the best chance at full coverage in the entirety of the city. And the, also accounts for wind and other type of interference that we may able to see. So we've all been there, right, at the beach or wherever that may be, and the wind picks up and you kind of start to hear things from a distance, or it becomes harder to hear things, you know, that's, that's just physics, right? And so by the locations that were selected, work with the city's terrain, but also with the, the typical wind that the city experiences. And so, you know, the, the original proposal for the six locations at the 50-foot level are as you see here today. We've also been asked to look at the potential for a couple of other additional locations, and that is, some of the modeling has also been done, so we're happy to review that as well if the council would like to do that. Before kind of moving on to some other topics, any other immediate questions or topics that we can discuss?
I just, before you go on, there's a really simple question.
Yes, ma'am.
The poles that, so they're 50 feet high.
Yes, ma'am.
So the speaker array is, it sits on the top of the pole? So is it 50 feet plus the speaker array?
No, ma'am, that's a great question. So it's a, it's a 50-foot pole, and generally speaking, the rule of thumb is a 50-foot pole would be about seven to nine feet in the ground, right? So that means that the above-ground level is what we're talking about. From the ground to the top of the pole is 50 feet. That's the part that we're looking at. The, the pole just has about, the mast that sits on top of the wooden pole is about eight feet high. And so once you bury the pole in the ground, your total above-ground level AGL is going to be 50 feet. It's, the total height is 50 feet, yes, ma'am.
So the pole above ground is less than 50?
Correct. And then the, the speakers attached to the top of that pole. Yes, sir.
But the top of the speakers are 50-foot level?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Jimmy, you good?
I just wanted to know if, oh, you understand?
No, go ahead, Jim.
Did you happen to plot out any mix and match kind of alternatives? So some with the 120 and some with the 30s? So, because some of our, obviously, some of the 30-foot, the 50-foot poles look too high.
Right.
So have you looked at that one portion of the city using multiple 30-foot rather than single 50-foot?
We, we did, and during, during the, the, the course of plotting that out, we found that we would need a total of five or so of the smaller 30-foot poles to cover just because of the terrain challenges. And so we didn't kind of go down that path because we've seen how difficult it's been to get approval for the three, right? And so to kind of save everybody the pain, we, we did not. But, but I'm certainly happy to model that, but it, it, the, the challenges end up becoming, from a cost perspective, also additional because the, the, the cost of actually being and putting the poles in the ground and everything else become, turns the entire thing more exponential.
Was the, the chart that you had three before this, or with the white on it, is this the 30?
These are the 30s, but this, yes, sir.
So you can see around what happens to the 30s?
You'd need more.
Oh, you need way more.
You would need.
Well, but we can mix and match, because we've already got some 50s in. We could probably put another 50 in. And then if we could drop some of the others to 30s, so it wouldn't be, wouldn't be five or seven, because you have 50 in the triangle.
Is what you're showing here, the three that are already installed, the correct ones on here?
The correct, the, the, the three that are already installed are at the, at the 50-foot height.
So those three are already there?
No, they're not, they're on the other side.
Yeah.
The 50-foot is on the other side, correct?
So we have city hall here, which is the, at the 50-foot, as you can see here, it says height.
That's its current propagation.
That's correct. And so one of the things about audio, very similar to kind of if you can imagine being at a concert, audio is additive, right? And so as, as long as you, a, a, a single siren has its own limitations, but the sound waves, the propagation is, is increasing the overall volume of the overall system. So when you're testing one tower at a time, you're going to find significant gaps. But when you test them all at the same time, the, the individual towers become additive amongst each other. So what you're seeing here is the, for example, the city hall propagation of itself because it's not being, it's not receiving any of the additive benefits of a larger speaker at the. receiving any of the additive benefits of a larger speaker at the upper Blackwater location, for example, right? And so you find some of the those gaps that are provided there because the 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 siren at the Blackwater location would be additive. It would make the the tower at City Hall even more powerful. It is the, and the reason for that is because the way that our speakers are designed, without going into too much of the intellectual property, they're they're slightly out of phase with one another. So they're they're designed to not cancel each other out, but to make each other better, right, and stronger.
Okay. I just had some questions. And I mean, I was going to ask a question, but I know you said you're going to ask, get to that later regarding particular locations. I was questioning between the Chesterfield and Chuck Wagon location.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding, there's been an issue, I know that from the beginning, I know it's taken a while, but from the beginning, we were talking about how this 70 dB, this is way before your time, that this should be sufficient for people to hear whether in their house or out of their house. And then it turned out like, well, that's not really happening. And you're not going to hear it in the house. So we were, they were talking about the safe units.
Right.
So my my issue obviously is safety for the residents. Primarily, residents are going to be in the homes as opposed to out of the home. But and especially at a time when it's most precarious, if they're sleeping, for example, and and they really need to know, then obviously, inside the home would be better, because that would wake them up, hopefully. So my question is, I really would like to know, from your standpoint, I know that I've heard, and I don't know this whether it's true or not, but your preference would be to put all the poles in at one time. Is that correct?
We're flexible, right? At the end of the day, there are costs associated with kind of redeploying the crews and the teams and everything else, right? So from a cost perspective, if we're going to come out and do three poles, it is going to be cheaper than if we come out three different times to do one pole at a time, right? But with that being said, understanding the 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 situation and everything else, we have extended to the teams here that you are, we are more than willing to work with you without increasing costs to, as long as we can prepare and say, okay, we're going to do three sites, to prepare to do them one at a time, we are, we are willing and happy to to work with this, with the city council to make sure that 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 can be done in a way without driving the costs up, right? With that being said, I think to answer a couple of the questions, so if I understand correctly, outdoor warning is traditionally designed for outdoor warning, right? When, when, when the original proposals happened, I think we went down from from nine sirens to six, to four, to three, to where we are today, right? The original site plans were proposing what would be the outdoor coverage at approximately 85 dB, bringing the 70 decibel levels to the inside of the homes, right? As we went down into quantities due to various reasons, right, whether it was locations or feasibility of installation, the the outdoor coverage that we're providing today and that we're aiming for brings us to that 70 decibel level, which of course then dampens as you start to go inside the home, right? And so part of that give and take has been the challenge that we're facing today. The other challenge is that the, because of the city's terrain, small changes in the elevation and the location of the towers can have significant impacts on what the overall audible coverage ends up being, right? And so one of the ways is that we ended up modeling, for example, the the Chuck Wagon and Bowie Lane potential as an alternative to the other one. So as you can see, we have, you know, the Chuck Wagon and Bowie is here. Just simply from the from the terrain challenges, we can see a significant increase in coverage in the areas between the East Road Gate, the Crest Road, East Gate, and and the the previous areas, right? Similar, here we are at the cul-de-sac, and from a top level down, you can see how that potentially can impact. Now, when we remove, when we reduce the Chesterfield cul-de-sac tower down to 40 feet, because I think that was one of the 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 requested site changes, you can actually see a pretty significant impact to the the overall coverage, right? We have a significant reduction in audio propagation in the in the center part of the of the of the city here. And we have more propagation kind of outside the city limit just because of the location and the terrain. And so if we throw on the 3D, right, we can kind of start to see how that impacts the going up the hill. I don't know what just happened there. But let me just re-center myself here because I'm losing it. Oh, my goodness. Okay. Here we are. Okay. So if we go back into the 3D mode. Oh, my goodness. I don't know what's happening today. But ultimately, when when it does work, we are able to kind of see what the terrain impact on on the individual tower ends up being. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna skip that for this demonstration. But but there are, there are impacts to that overall design, right? And and they're pretty significant. And I think that that's also visible in the the small changes that were made to the fire station tower, for example, right? The concessions that were made there.
You say the significant impact. Are you talking about the Chesterfield versus Chuck Wagon with with the same size pole? Or are you talking about the difference between a 30-foot or 40-foot pole versus a 50-foot pole?
The the latter, the difference between the 40 and the 50-foot pole. That's correct.
So so if you're doing a 50-foot pole at Chuck Wagon, similar to the size pole you want to do at at Chesterfield, what are the differences?
We actually modeled that as well. So that is in the V3 model. So this is the original. This is the Chesterfield cul-de-sac. So if we can kind of take a look there, and let me see if I can maybe split the differences onto each side. And then, let me just put that here. And then the other one is, is it this one? Yes. And then this would be the Chuck Wagon and Bowie. So you can see that the Chesterfield cul-de-sac does, in fact, provide you a better sound propagation. The
So the one on the right is the 50-foot Chesterfield, is that what you're looking at?
Yes, that's correct.
And the other one is the 50-foot Chuck Wagon and Bowie?
Yes, sir. That's correct. And so you can see what that ends up doing is the, for the folks in the near the Chesterfield area, for the folks near the Chesterfield area, you end up having a slightly higher propagation. So they end up getting it a little bit louder there. But it does reduce the overall distribution of the audio and the additive capabilities to the upper Blackwater and to the the City Hall.
So are you saying for the surrounding area or the city as a whole? Like, where are you measuring the difference? Because I'm trying to see it.
Yeah. So if you, for example, right here, if you look at the Chuck Wagon and Bowie, right? So right about this area here, you see an increase, a significant increase in decibel levels, right, compared to here, for example? So the residents in this area here, of course, benefit because they're closer to the tower. But what you end up having is are larger gaps in these areas here that are being covered by the the Chesterfield versus the Chuck Wagon and Bowie, right? So then this entire area here becomes significantly impacted by by that. So so this is where, this is a perfect example, actually, of how the City Hall Tower becomes much more additive in this area here compared to when it's on its own.
And if you had a 30-foot at both of those two sites, do you have that?
At 30, 30 feet, we did not model those sites at 30 feet, but it is, at 40,
either or, both of them, both of those sites. So if you had 30
Oh, to both. We did, we'd have not modeled that. But but I'm certain, you know, I'm happy to 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 model it.
Is this based on actual testing or modeling?
This is based, so this, the way that the modeling works is, we we have a general model, right, that that takes into account, you know, given terrains. But when the team came out here and did their testing, we then added that data directly here into the software. And then the software is now using that to 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 in an attempt to become more accurate, right?
But if you actually, the siren went off? I mean, it was physical testing that you're, this is based on, okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think the team here was was here for quite a while, activating the sirens in in all different locations to get the data points necessary.
So I'm back to, it's a question. So what I'm trying to to get down to is because we've had various people talk, and myself included, saying, hey, if the primary place that people are going to be when a fire hits is going to be inside their homes, what, and and you had, we had representations earlier, and I don't know if things have changed, but that if with the current three poles we have, that your people thought that the indoor units, if the indoor units were in all of these areas that are not adequately covered, they would hear the siren and then the voice system telling them commands from inside their home with the safe unit. Is that still what you're saying that you
That is correct. So so what, the things about a holistic mass notification program or implementation are, is that none of the individual systems themselves, in our opinion, are, will address all the concerns that a community may have, right? A a a truly robust emergency notification system would have multiple modalities in order to reach your citizens. Each of them have their own pros and cons, right? The outdoor warning systems are more costly, but they are also more, they have their benefits being that they're able to reach a significantly larger group of people at one time, right? And then, of course, with the safe units, which are some, a product that we're bringing in the market, right, and we're launching in paradise, is something that synchronizes to the local sirens that are in a, that are a particular city, but can provide audible and visual alerts about what's happening. But they're also battery powered, and so you can simply take it with you during an evacuation, right? And so, and continue to receive alerts. So think of this as as a modern-day NOAA radio. But rather than being controlled by NOAA and by the federal government at a much higher level, it's controlled here by the folks that that monitor and and send alerts to the town. So but of course, with a NOAA radio, there's no visual alerting capabilities. So for, and then, of course, there's the additional modalities, which are the SMS text messaging, phone calls, or potentially even a mobile app that residents can have and download it. We are offering, and and, you know, again, from from through our grant system, and it's mostly because we've been part of this this project from very early on. And we want, and again, like I mentioned, that kind of opened up the topic here, our end goal is that the city is, and the residents are satisfied. And also, ultimately, at the end of the day, that in the worst-case scenario, and God forbid, and I hope that that the city never has to experience this, but should there be an mass emergency where there is an evacuation order involved, that everyone can evacuate safely, receive all the notifications and alerts that they need. And so our approach is that each individual modality has its own pros and cons, and each one of them has a significant, you know, plays a significant role and value in an overall emergency notification plan. The the safe units, like you said before, they're loud, they're designed to get your attention inside your home. They're also designed to give you additional information that a siren, per se, wouldn't be able to give you, right? One of the additional things that they're capable of doing is somebody being able to request help evacuating, for example, right? So when an alert is sent out, they have that ability, if, of course, the city infrastructure has the ability to support someone monitoring and to receive that. An outdoor warning siren is going to provide instruction to everyone who's out walking their dogs, at the parks, in their vehicles, coming home. The idea being, again, is that something will get your attention, and then you can then take that and look on the mobile app, look on your phone to see if there's an alert, and look at your safe unit if it's in a different part of the room. And so all of these systems kind of work together, right, to ensure that everybody, wherever they are, is going to be able to receive the information that they need. I think that the the idea that everyone's going to be in their homes during the emergency is something that we wish, but it just factually isn't the the reality of what ends up happening. Now, for sure, the most catastrophic emergencies happen whenever they're, when they, when the emergency does come in the middle of the, in the middle of the night, when everybody is sleeping and and you're not able to reach them, right? I 100% agree with that. And that's mostly because you're not able to reach them, maybe because the city or town doesn't have any outdoor warning sirens, doesn't have any sort of safe unit equivalent, and doesn't have, or maybe they overly relied on one modality, right? For example, you know, the the more recent fires we saw in LA, the the emergency warning system that people were receiving over their phones, either from the cell towers being overloaded, or the borders and barriers being kind of a little blurry, created all kinds of confusion and sort of things. So again, my opinion, as somebody that's been in this, in this industry for a long time, is that a holistic approach is something that requires, has multiple modalities of being able to reach the citizens. But to answer your question, I guess the final part of that question is, yes. The the caveat being, and I think this is a conversation that we've had in the past, the, these units are, they communicate with the local sirens, right? But just like audio, they also have limitations when it comes to radio frequencies. At the end of the day, we, if you have a cell phone, if you go into a basement or a subway somewhere that's really kind of secluded, you're likely to lose cell service, right? Now, while this doesn't require cell phones, it does use radio communication to communicate with the local, the closest tower to it. And so if we took this one unit by itself and started walking around Rolling Hills, we're going to find gaps. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. The beauty, though, of these is that each one of these units also relays to a neighboring unit. And so as more residents in the city have these units, they automatically increase their coverage and the probability, and the reliability within the city. And so the towers will broadcast their signal, their radio signals, you know, various elements could impact that. But as long as there are at least a handful of residents, units that are online and receiving them, they will, they will expand their coverage and make it so that they're, it's called a mesh system, where it essentially increases the capability and capacity and reach of each individual unit. So I want to make sure that that's clear as well, is that, you know, if we go into one of the dead zones that exist today, and we put a single unit there, I cannot guarantee that that one unit's going to receive it if they're, if we don't have a a robust distribution system. So this is something I just want to make sure is clear, because I don't, I don't want to mislead anybody into thinking that this is something that just automatically solves all the problems.
Okay. And then the other thing, at the very beginning, like, this is years ago, but we were talking about how it would work. And and at one point, HQE said, well, we have a truck and we could put up, you know, a model, a simulated tower, and and put the siren out so that you could actually hear if it works or not. And then, at that point, the decision was made, like, no, 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 we'll just go out to hear it at your facility. And one of our council members went out there. But looking back, maybe that would have been, I mean, we've been trying different things. And and I realize, like, for example, we never heard until after the fact that, at least I didn't, the that the pole at the fire station was requested to be lower. And because of that, now we're not getting the coverage that that we're supposed to have gotten for that pole. So this is something that we could have pivoted, maybe, but there were some, there were a lot of different things that happened. But what I want to find out, if there's a way with these safe units, because I want to see, because there have been objections to the sirens, that is there a way to get something that on poles that currently exist, where they co-locate, so it acts as a, as a repeater to the safe units and/or with the towers, so that we wouldn't necessarily, I mean, have to put in the money for the extra poles, where we get coverage so people can hear it. And I don't know if they can sync it to their Apple watches, you know, do they sync, do the safe units sync with those, so that if they're out walking their dog, or or they're driving home, that they'll get an alert when they get within the area, because they're not going to need it if they're not near home. I mean, they're going to have to rely on on the regular alert system. And if that's not working, that's what we were looking for, to have a system like this cover. So that that was my question. I don't know technologically if that is.
Well, our current plan today was, is whether the city decides to move forward with installing additional poles or not, is that sometime in the end of October, early November, to begin the adding the, what we call the gateways, to the three sirens that you already have today. So so our original plan today, and this is the grant, this is the infrastructure that we're giving the city at no cost, is to install those those transmitters, those gateways, on the existing poles that you have. My my fear, my concern is that that, you know, we do that, a couple of residents buy the unit, and they're going to sit at home, and it's going to say, no, no service, right? And and so what we're trying to do is is make sure that that's 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 clear and understood, that the way that this whole thing is going to work is is cohesively. With that, with that being said, the the individual, again, the individual units, you know, the areas where, right now, there's no audio coverage, they are also at highest risk of not having safe unit coverage because of the audio and radio frequencies work very similarly, right? But with that, with that being said, I, you know, the the request that you just asked, that you just presented, is already in the works, right? That's already what we're working towards, is to install the those gateways, those transmitters on the existing poles that you have.
Yes, I understand that. And and I guess the timing, now you've told us that you're planning the end of October, early November. So my question is trying to say, I don't know So my question is trying to say, I don't know if you can distribute test models so that people can test it out in their homes, and then decide, oh, okay, I'll purchase that because it works. So if it works with the three poles, we put one, and you bring it out there, and it's basically, they have a limited time to test it out, we'll we'll put the siren.
Let him finish, tell him the whole story about what he's talking about doing, and then we can discuss the different ways, if you're looking at saying, we, what you're saying right now is, we don't put the siren poles on outside, and we're going to wing it, I mean, whatever that is.
No, no, I'm just saying, if they did, we test that.
But let's let him finish telling the story of what that is, then we can talk about it, instead of negotiating here as a possible.
You know, I'm asking him if that's possible.
So ultimately, at the end of the day, the the one of the reasons why we're having these conversations, right, is because of the the concessions to how to roll out the system, and to do it with the least amount of of intrusion possible, right, at the end of the day. You know, the when we proposed their original site locations, we proposed them because our experience said that this is what the city needs, in order for the city to walk away fully happy and satisfied with the audible coverage, right, both indoor and outdoor. And through the the concessions and the reduction in scope to try to minimize and get something in the city, the 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 situation that we're in, right, is a result of that. And so my fear is that the deploying of the safe units would would result in a situation similar to where we are today, if we tried to piecemeal it together over the course of the next three several months, or whatever the case might be, to without putting in the full infrastructure, right? So that that is that is my concern, that, you know, we we the path from A to B is this, are there other paths potentially? But the the best and and most achievable path has been kind of laid out over the course of the last six or seven months, and and I hesitate to say, let us let us kind of piecemeal this, because also I know that those residents that that receive the units, if it's not widely deployed, are going to not be happy with the results, and it's going to turn into a situation similar to the one that we're in now. At least, that's my that's my fear, that's my concern.
Do you have any more presentation?
I don't have anything else to demonstrate, unless there's anything specific that anybody wants to see or zoom in on.
Okay, so then, why don't we do this, is, why don't you go back, take a seat?
Sure.
And we're going to open public comment. Public comment is going to be asking questions, and we're going to write them all down. And you come up, say whatever you need to say, we're going to write down the list of the questions is, and then, once we have all those consolidated, then we're going to close the public comment, and then they're going to answer to the best of their ability what that information is. Okay? So, you good?
Yes.
Then we're going to open public comment. Does anyone have a public comment? Darren, come on.
So don't count this as a question.
Well, you got to you got to come up, you got to give your name and address, and and then, name and address into that little microphone.
Darren Del Conti, thirty Chuck Wagon. Oh, geez, I'm really special.
So just to make sure, in order for the community who has joined us online and on YouTube, or live, we want to ensure that they capture the questions and the conversation, so we have a seat if you have a mic in front of you, that allows them to be able to engage from their home. So, thank you.
All right, sure. So this isn't a question, but how many questions can I ask? Okay. So so first of all, you you said, I think it was one of the first slides you showed, these original ones were installed in twenty twenty-three, but there wasn't testing done in twenty twenty-five. Is there a reason why it took two years before an initial testing was done, to prove that there wasn't adequate coverage?
Just rattle off the list, and then we'll.
Second of all, I know that this gentleman mentioned they'd tested fifty different sites. Could we get a list of the fifty different sites they tested? Third is, he had mentioned that they did actually audible testing, when Pat Wilson had asked, did you actually put the alarm up? I don't recall them going to the bottom of Chesterfield with a fifty-foot pole and doing an audible test. I'd like to know the date they did that. Are the speakers three sixty emitting sound, or is it just one direction? Are the tests done during a windy afternoon, or a calm afternoon, or a overcast day, or a sunny day? I I went online five minutes ago, and there's tests out there for fire alarm systems that will hook up to a smartphone. Is there a reason we're not pursuing maybe something like that, where we don't have to have a fifty-foot pole with a big old box on the top of it? Do these poles, if they are approved to be installed, do they have to be decorated with all the phony shrubbery of the tree that's just going to destroy the view even more than they already are? I'm probably done, if somebody else wants to go ahead and have a seat.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We're just going to, we're going to gather them all and just get them all.
I just, can we get the name of the?
Oh, it's Darren Del Conti.
My name is Mark Ellers. I'm speaking on behalf of Cheryl Marx, who's at eight Chesterfield, only because she's deathly afraid of public speaking, but she's here, as we can see. And and the the big question really is, is am I the only one that thinks we've got it completely backwards here? I listened to the gentleman speak, and I'm very appreciative that he is here today. But the the questions that Ms. Dieringer asked were very relevant, and the answer that we kept getting was, you know, the safe network isn't going to work if we piecemeal it, and we have to have everybody get it. Am I the only one that thinks it's backwards, that we're asking the city to pay, you know, sixty thousand dollars per pole, or whatever it is, and we're asking the citizens to pay a hundred dollars per box? It seems to me that if we forego the extra sirens, which we don't even know what they're going to do, if you look at the demographic of the community, I I believe one hundred percent, the most likelihood is that everybody's going to be inside, they're not going to hear the sirens anyway, and we're leaving it to chance whether people are going to have these inside units. I think a better use of the money would be for the safe units, why are we not exploring that first? That's those are my questions.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Bill, I'm for twenty-five Chuck Wagon. We're the house at the corner of Chesterfield and Chuck Wagon. And I wasn't prepared for questions, but I'll try to form it into a question. I appreciate, I think most of you came into my backyard. And so the first question is, were you guys surprised at how invasive that fifty-foot pole was? Second question is, that pole was four inches thick. Now, we're going to have a three-foot by, I believe you said, eight-foot speaker on the top. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's, the second question is, is that even be more invasive? If you go and put decorations on it, now I really cringe. I mean, it's bad enough as it is. So that seems to make zero, zero sense to me. Then, I was looking at the fire station. The next question is, what happens when the sun hits it? There's a ton of metal on this thing. My backyard is a hundred and fifty feet from it, the light's just shining right at it. So how does that get mitigated? The question is on Bowie and Chuck Wagon. I know that's a site, that's a hundred feet higher than the Chesterfield location, so that certainly seems to have more propagation issues, I mean, more propagation, it'd be better propagation. If there, question, if there is an issue with the tree there, I've already volunteered to pay for cutting the tree or trimming the tree, so I don't want the city to consider that to be a problem. And then the the last thing, was it ever considered at the curve on Chuck Wagon to put a pole? That has absolutely no view issues, it's fifty feet higher than the Chesterfield location, and seems like it would it would actually cover part of the areas that you kind of indicated were a problem, because it should pick up that valley better. And I think I think that's it.
Oh, could you be more specific on, what do you mean the curve? Do you mean before?
I'm sorry, as you're coming down Chuck Wagon, as you come into Chuck Wagon, and there's the trailhead, the trail, it's to go up and down?
Right.
Okay, there's a there's a curve right there.
Curve as you enter down into the?
End of the gully.
Yeah. And so my, what surprised me was that location is fifty feet higher than the Chesterfield location, because I would have thought that was down lower. So again, it it raises up, and you put the fifty feet up.
Okay.
All right, sorry, it wasn't exactly questions.
No, that's good. Thank you.
That's the Upper Willows Springs Trail.
Yeah. Perfect, thanks, Darren. Come on up.
Hi there, I'm Danika Ainidi, and I'm at twenty Upper Blackwater Canyon. And for the record, I do want to say, I am not opposed to the siren poles. What I am opposed is the process that this is being done. And my questions are, we had three poles in twenty twenty-three, how are they faring? Why did we compromise on one of them, and now we have to compensate for that? And what has been the maintenance on that, and what is the cost? Because my research, and my legal team's research on maintenance, HQE, I'm sorry to say, does have maintenance expenses, and if they're not maintained, it does pose a danger, a major danger. And what are those costs? Is it possible to see the specifications on the fifty-plus locations, and why they were rejected? Lastly is, what is the distance? What is the sound impact of people, like the residents, that live within ten to fifty feet of these sirens? If they're going to carry through the rest of the, to the entire community into the canyons, how loud are they to those residents that are right up against them? Because that I have a problem with, due to some issues with my son, who has auditory issues. And if that is going to get installed, and there is damage, I need to know, so, which will cause other other consequences. Nextly is, how this this particular intersection, and I will quote the Rolling Hills Association saying, it is the most dangerous intersection in this community. There have been multiple accidents here that hit that triangle. If that pole gets hit, and trees have gone down, it will pose a danger, fifty feet, whether the solar panels are falling, or anything, and because of the proximity of the residents' homes to it. Did we look into that? Extreme weather, that particular, I can say on my property, extreme weather, there's always a tree down, always. There's always an impact, because of the height and the kind of location of the terrain and the way the wind hits. Did we look into that? Electrical hazards, I'm not sure how they're being installed, but there have been, there are falling objects that do come down from these poles. Did we look into that? Any of the, my concern is the safety of them, and their location. And this particular occasion, and especially an occasion that is invasive to someone's home, is putting the residents who live right next to it in major danger. And I am at an intersection where a car has turned over, caught on fire on my property, knocked down gates, because of the way people turn into that area. And I don't know, have you looked into that? And I think, oh, do, does HQE have a deadline? Are we forced to fulfill a contract by the end of October? And I actually appreciate council members' question is, did we look into testing these safe units today, especially if they can bounce to the next unit? What is the efficiency? What is the effectiveness of it right now? What is the effectiveness of these siren poles right now in this area? Right, what will it be with the three, with the additional three that you're proposing? What is the percentage? That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, Mary Martha Bernadette, from ten Chesterfield, along with my husband Faustino behind me. Thank you very much. I appreciated the HQE presentation, and had some questions for them, as well as for the council. I guess my first question is, did the council receive Don Swanson's email? Okay. I support that, just want to make sure it was received. Second, from HQE, could we have overlay maps showing the Chesterfield Road pole versus the Chuck Wagon Bowie pole? Because it didn't really look very different to me, except perhaps some of the brush and coyotes would be notified differently. But when it comes to where the houses were, I I couldn't really see a particularly discernible Could the gateway transmitters be placed in places where we did not have siren poles? For example, on a house or other existing pole where it was allowed to co-locate, so that we could test the safe network? I'm trying to only ask questions that have not been asked already. What is the impact on the evacuation itself and ability of fire trucks with the two different poles in on Chesterfield and Chuck Wagon and Bowie? According to where the stakes are, the Chuck Wagon and Bowie is a little bit off the easement and next to a tree, so I wouldn't imagine that is as imposing for a fire truck to get around as it would be on Chesterfield, especially if a car was parked in that cul-de-sac, and given where the post is proposed to be, there would be additional obstacles for the for the fire trucks in the case of an emergency. Okay. Is HQE working on SMS text messaging and and mobile app development for the future? I I wasn't sure if I heard that correctly or not. If so, what would be the the opportunity for us to get those when they're in the available in the future? And if we put the poles up now, and the SMS SMS text messaging or mobile app became available within the next two years, how much is it going to cost for us to take out all the poles that are now no longer necessary and impeding people's views? Let me see if I have any others here. And is there any reason not to prioritize testing of the safe network in advance of putting up additional poles? Could it be tested? Could we have transponders, gateway transponders placed in different areas, whether they were at fifty feet or lower, to find out if that safe network would work? To me, it seems like that's going to be most vital when it comes to evacuation, which I believe was the primary problem. One of the primary problems that they had in the Palisades fire was really the evacuation. And our our city has limited evacuation routes, and so to be able to communicate to different people that evacuation is necessary, and how to do it, is going to be vital. That's all my questions.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Back for him.
One second.
Hello, Tina Bernadette, ten Chesterfield. So I just had a couple of questions. One is, when I looked at that map of the difference between Chuck Wagon and Bowie and Chesterfield, I couldn't really, it looked to me like actually more homes were covered with the Chuck Wagon location. That was the first question. And in terms of testing, did they actually put up a fifty-foot speaker at that location that could replicate the sound, and did they test at the homes and inside the homes? My experience with a lot of computer modeling is sort of garbage in, garbage out, so you can't make big decisions based on a computer model. I suspect that the proper testing probably has not been done at those locations, and I'd like to see the date that it was, if it was. And secondly, as a city, we all love this city, it's a beautiful city, we are attracted to its rural environment and the rural characteristics. Big, ugly speakers are ugly. I think a lot of potential homebuyers may consider that ugly, and may detract the home value. Has the city actually looked at and studied the impact of these, and how it may decrease the values on Chesterfield and Chuck Wagon, and are they willing to reimburse the homeowners for that potential decrease in home value? And are they willing to reimburse the homeowners for that potential decrease in home value? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we're going to close. Oh, sorry, Sarah. You want to come up? Yep.
We don't fight. You're not afraid here. Now I've forgotten that question. Okay, I know what my question is. I'm just kidding. I find it very difficult to understand all of the siren coverage with these topographical maps. I guess I'm a little too literal. Could we put siren coverage on a street map of Rolling Hills so we can see exactly what streets are covered and how well they're covered? And then the same thing with the prospective sirens?
I know, nine o'clock you're at it.
Hi, Keflin Hughes, 13 Caballeros. I just had one quick question. I was startled and shocked by the cost of the camouflage, also the idea of it. And I'm wondering, we have so many trees. Is it possible that it could be either integrated into a tree or hidden by a tree? They're so stark as they are. And I just wonder why we couldn't hide it with a real tree because the cost seems so extreme.
I have one more. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
We're just, we're just, we're going to run out.
I'm, I'm sorry. Ten Chesterfield, Martha Bernadette. Is the, would the pole out in the open, in the Chesterfield cul-de-sac, serve as a lightning rod?
All right, thank you. All right, Darren, you got to be quick because we're going to...
Two more questions. It appeared, looking at the maps after these three poles are installed, that it still doesn't provide full coverage to the city. So after these two or three are installed, if they get approved, is there going to be additional poles installed? And then, second of all, I'm sure there's been a fairly substantial budget for all the poles. Could we take that money and maybe looking to fire prevention as opposed to an alarm system? And I'll end with this. I appreciate what you guys do. I know it's a thankless job. You're never going to make everybody happy, but I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. All right, now we're going to close up a comment. Come on up, just come on up. And I'm going to answer a couple of quick things off the top real here. Is one, this started a long time ago because I was concerned about safety, how our evacuation routes work, on how crammed it is, on how to get the right people out where it needs to be. Originally, they wanted nine poles. And we squished it down to three that were the easiest ones out of the way of everybody to try to see how good we can get it. They're using computer software to do how this is going to work. And even when they test it, a lot of times they're not even doing it where you can hear it. They're testing it with sounds we can't hear. So we're trying to figure this out. The reason there's layers on this, I live right over here. I don't have cell service except for through my Wi-Fi. Sometimes I get lucky and it works. We had a squirrel commit suicide into the, the phone pole over here, which is the entire internet for the entire side of the hill we're on. We had no power and we had no internet and no cell service anywhere over here from one squirrel. So because of that, these are the other reasons. And part of what they're saying is about redundancy here is, some things are going to work better than other things wherever you are. Hopefully, your cell phone's going to work perfectly and that's where it's going to come and they're going to tell you this. And then maybe you're going to go hear the siren and then you're going to hear this. Whatever those things are, it's all about layers. Because right now, the rough count is over 220 houses are not hearing this, what they should be hearing, which is basically a third of the city isn't hearing this the way they should. We have an older population. We have to give everybody every edge possible so we can leave as efficiently as possible so we aren't on the news for the wrong reasons. And some of these other cities, and you saw Palisades. Palisades, people were driving out, got jammed up in traffic, and everyone had to run. So I don't know what you got to think about that, running from, you know, Chuck Wagon all the way outside of the city is not the most efficient way of doing it. So we're going to try to go through and answer the questions. We are not picking something and being installed from where we are right now. We are looking at options. We've looked at a ton of options of where this is going. This has taken a long time. Their company has been overly helpful on trying to find solutions that are going to be done with the least amount of, of poles, with the least amount of intrusion. And we're trying our best to find where these things are going to be. So we're going to keep working on this. We still have a, we still haven't solved the, on the west side of the hill yet. And so that's coming to this as well. The safe network is going to get installed on the poles we have. We're going to get these out to people who are going to buy them and put them in their homes, which will help build that network. But no matter what, that's not going to solve all the problems. And so we have to just keep going with the layers so that way it works as best as can. Karina, start the best you can through some of these questions.
Okay. So question, does state network needs to be happy? Yes, you just asked if it needs to be on all the poles they're currently co-located on. And can they forego the sirens that are being proposed this evening? Just addressed that. And you addressed it earlier. Your response was that you would still need the three additional poles to ensure that the co-locating of the safe, sorry, the safe network can work with the safe units.
Okay, and hang a second. And we're going to, theoretically, let's say we did end up with these three poles wherever these things end up, and it's still not right and we're still having people who are going to be in danger, we're going to look at how we're going to solve that next. We're trying to do this one step at a time to, because otherwise, we would have started with nine poles. I think one of them was 15 poles is what we started with. So that's why we're doing it.
The next question is, the poles that we currently have installed, there are metal components to the pole. Will it reflect, have some type of reflection as the sun hits the pole and these speakers? And will it reflect onto someone's property or views?
The poles themselves, actually the tops of the poles are a matte-finished fiberglass and sheet metal. And so they're designed to reduce any sort of reflection. I do want to point out just really quick, and hopefully this will put some minds at ease. We have thousands of sirens installed worldwide. We're a veteran-owned business. We currently install sirens at every single military base worldwide, including Marine Corps and Air Force. And separately from the military bases, we have probably close to 2,000 sirens in residential areas. And none, throughout all of these systems, we have in place things to protect them against lightning, for example. They, they, there, there are debate on, in the industry, whether or not they attract more lightning or not. The reality is, is that we're fully grounded in complying with all state, city, federal laws. But also, as a life safety system, we ensure that it is capable of withstanding the harsh conditions. We have sirens installed in the depths of Alaska. And we have them installed, and more recently was in the news. Our sirens, our actual sirens are still installed in Iraq and protecting US troops even as, as late as last year. And so the, the point being is that they're designed to withstand harsh conditions. They're designed to withstand environmental factors. And they're designed to be as safe and reliable as possible. So compared with a tree, for example, we are 10 feet deep. We are, the, the poles themselves are wind rated up to 115 miles per hour. And they're, they're designed, and, and we have wet stamp engineers who have specked out the poles and everything else. So again, I just want to reiterate from a safety perspective, the towers are designed to be as safe and non-intrusive to the local populace.
Will the sun, when it hits the metal, be, impacts someone's eyes, which is the sign?
We have not found any of that. We've never received any of those reports from the thousands of sirens that we have installed.
So I know we'll probably jump into it as you kind of demonstrate Bowie and the curb on, as you kind of approach on Chuck Wagon and Chesterfield. We'll jump into that one. I know you'll probably pull up the propagation because some of these kind of overlap. Upper Blackwater, there were three installed. And, and why did we compromise those locations? I believe Mayor Piper may have addressed that, that at the time in which these poles were initially. And, and I do apologize, I didn't address Mr. Case appropriately. Mr. Case is the CEO. He is the owner and co-founder of HQE and has been with the city from the concept, from conceptual to now fully operational in the three locations and expanding that. So I do apologize for not giving you the credit that's owed. And thank you again for being here this evening. So when these initial poles were recommended to the city council at the time in 2019, 2020, when they entered into the contract, the discussions that we're having this evening were very similar in nature at that time. We were looking at locations that were providing the optimal amount of coverage based on the sound propagation maps. And at that time, those poles that were recommended were either on easements and/or in areas in which they're not necessarily aligned with what the community association perspectives and views were for their easements being utilized in some locations, such as the garden shacks. So a lot of these conversations are repeats that date back to the 2019, 2020 years. And in regards to maintenance and cost, our poles have been maintained continuously. You can maintain them and see if they need any type of network or adjustments through looking at the computer and looking at that. I am a full user. I'm able to turn on these amazing sirens. And if you wanted to, I can play with it with my own voice and say things. But I can actually see to determine whether or not these sirens require some type of maintenance. They have been out here. They have met with staff. And they've looked at all three poles and continue to do so. We have not been charged at this time for those visits as relates to maintenance and the associated hourly rates that the staff are out here doing that. So there was a lot of concessions between then and where we are today. Same conversation, just a different point in time. There was a question about, and I'm answering some of these because I'm, I'm only year two into this, but this is almost a year five into the program. So a lot of research has been taken into staff. So I know a question was asked about the different times in which these locations were, these current locations were tested. It was early April when the HQT came, team came out. And they came out, and I believe it was in a truck, and they pulled out a unit. The unit was in, located at these additional locations and they sounded off a siren. We notified residents because it was an unexpected visit. But we wanted to ensure that they needed all the tools and resources to be able to provide this data. So they went out there into these different locations and they were in the cul-de-sac of Chesterfield. It may not have been a 50-foot pole, but what it was, it was a technology that allows to be, to allow for the testing, which then capture that data. And that's what you see here today. And I know we don't have access to this. It's proprietary. So thank you for sharing that this evening. As far as the 50-plus locations, I'm sure there's a database that we can pull that information. But you have to look at that. There's a lot of coverage and a topography within the organi, within the city itself, limits the locations in which they can actually conduct these tests. The other question was for the, for the, the sound. And I know this is audit, and I'll let you answer this question. But, you know, at one of the last city council meetings, they shared that if the pole is located outside of your door, the sound is going to be much louder as it goes out and less louder as it's, less louder as it is closest to your home. We do have seniors, we do have residents that are more difficult in hearing and/or individuals who have hearing sensitivity. And staff has made a commitment through working with our ad hoc on developing a standard of operations procedure manual where if in fact your home is closest to the, to the pole, we have been committed a commitment to work with the residents to see what we can do to reduce the sound and/or minimize the impacts. There will be testing. Living in Hawaii, I heard the tsunami alarms continuously, but I knew the day and the time in which it was going to happen. So you knew how to prepare for that in anticipating of the testing. So these are concepts that we've been working with HQE, which by the way, they gave us a standard operating procedure at no cost, which allowed us to get where we are today, working with our ad hoc. Did I answer that question correctly about the sound propagation?
Yes, and I'm happy to add a little bit to it.
Sure, go ahead.
The FEMA, over the last 20, 25 years, particularly in places like the Midwest where there's a lot of tornadoes, hurricanes, and, and the coastal areas, they've created a go-by guide, which is essentially an industry standard. With speaker arrays, as they, the, the reason why we talk about the height impact and why we don't want to lower them is because as the speaker is lowered, that could potentially be entirely way too loud for an area that's closer to the speaker. At the height that the speakers are at, we have about a, I want to call it a five-foot wiggle room, really. But at the height that they're at, the, the distribution of audio is, is by distance and not by, by volume, right? So the, the initial instinct is the louder the speaker it is, the louder it's going to be here. But there is a, a projection, right? These are high-power speakers. And so the audio is being projected out in a, in a fan direction. And it has a 15-degree angle. So what, what ends up happening is the, the area that's actually closest to the pole is going to be, there's no area that's going to have a, a cover just above the FEMA guideline. And so it wouldn't be any louder than, say, having a fire truck in your driveway, right? It would, it is going to be louder, but it's not go, it's going to be within the, the industry standard levels that are considered safe and acceptable to a general emergency. So I want to make sure it is clear that there's, regardless of where the pole is, the, the size of the pole is going to dictate the height, the, the output power of the pole is going to dictate the height of the pole. And that height is going to ensure that the audio is distributed in a way that doesn't cause harm or excessive audio volume to the neighboring tower, to the neighboring residents. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
And then one of the other question was in regards to the location at the Garden, at the upper Blackwater and Portuguese Bend Road location. Thank you so much to Danica to share that information with staff. We reached out to the Sheriff's Department to determine how many accidents had occurred dating back to, I believe it was, I think I asked for 10 years. And I was able to identify that one incident that occurred. There was a vehicle that was driving out outside of the Garden Triangle. And either it didn't specify specifically, specify what was the cause of the accident, but what they determined it was the unfamiliarity of the area and the speed in which one was driving. But I, but I was able to look, I don't have all the specifics, but that's what I was able to gather. The overlay maps was a question. And I know we'll, but we'll jump into that as we address the, the curb at Chuck Wagon. Could the gateway transmitters or pole under home be co-located to other infrastructure? I would imagine something similar to like a utility pole, correct? Something similar to anything.
They're actually even, they're actually even significantly smaller. A gateway is about the size of a laptop with a couple of small antennas coming out of it.
Okay. And then if it could be co-located on a home?
It can, yes.
Okay.
A couple of things to add. It would require power or a solar panel, right? The reason why we typically reutilize the infrastructure, is this infrastructure, is because, exactly like the council member said, in the, leading up to an emergency, you typically have power. You typically have cell phone. During and after the emergency, you typically don't have either. And so the, the system is designed with its own redundant backup batteries, its own solar power, so it can continue running without utility power, without internet, without cellular reception. And so this is why we talk about the modalities. And so the gateways, even though they can be co-located in, in homes, they would typically require some sort of redundant backup power capabilities. And so that is where, that can become potentially not feasible.
And then the other question was, could this have an impact on an evacuation and/or considering the, the fire engines and their ability to maneuver around a cul-de-sac such as Chesterfield?
That's a great question. Generally speaking, when we, when we present an area wherever it is, that is one of the first things that we ensure, right? That it is not going to obstruct traffic or the flow of movement of, of personnel or staff or emergency responders. And in fact, the city and the local area would probably not approve the permit if it did. So one of the things that we had to do as part of this process is present this as well to the county and to the cities and to everyone else and receive a lot of checkboxes from a lot of agencies to approve a site. And that's part of the reason also why it's taken as long as it has. So, so if, if it were going to create an obstruction, the hope is that the, one of the many agencies, including the fire department, would identify that. Because they're one of the people that, they're one of the departments that have to check off the approval of a location as well.
And then the next question was SMS and texting and the mobile app. When will they, when will it be available and when can they get them?
They already are. We have thousands, hundreds of thousands of customers currently using them. And we've already offered them to the city at no cost.
And if we were to get them, what would be the cost if we were to remove these poles?
It's not something that I would recommend removing the poles. The, the idea again being is that, leading up to an emergency, if we know there's an emergency about to happen, your text messaging and your phone calls are going to work just fine. But typically speaking, and this is what's happened kind of across the board in every disaster, whether you look at Maui, whether you look at Los Angeles, Town of Paradise, or even in Texas, is that the cell phone infrastructure is the first one. It is not considered a critical infrastructure in the United States. And so as a result, the cell phone towers are going to be the first ones to jam up and, and, and remove, and be ineffective. This is, we had a 20-year span, a 10-year span in which people started abandoning sirens and wowing strictly to what we call electronic mass certification, EMNS, which is the text messaging, the mobile apps, and the phone calls. messaging, the mobile apps, and the phone calls. And in the last seven years, it has been full swing in the other direction, because people have realized that you're now relying on infrastructure that you have zero control over, AKA Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Sprint to provide you with all the capabilities you need to protect your residents.
And is there a reason not to prioritize the gateways? And I know that was a question that was answered earlier, is that we are going to prioritize it by having them completed, but we still are in need to have the additional poles to ensure we have the maximized coverage that we can get with the poles.
Right, they are independent things, right? We're talking about redundant infrastructure that is fully controlled within the city, right? So, these sirens, they're within your own, they're within your own control, they're within your own hands, you have control of your own fate in that perspective, right? Whereas, every other modality that we talk about, other than the safe units, which are also going to be there, you are relying on infrastructure that you have no jurisdiction over, AKA the cell towers. And so, the safe units, we are going to prioritize them. You guys are, have been moved to the immediately next capability, so as soon as we're done with the Town of Paradise full implementation there. Right now, our testing in the Town of Paradise is saying that each gateway is getting us approximately eight to 10 miles in coverage, which is pretty significant in the distance. So, we of course have tested them out in the deserts and areas where we have full access, and we're getting significant value out of those. But Town of Paradise shares a very similar terrain as you guys, and we're seeing very significant coverage out there. So, the hope is that between now and the end of October, when we fully complete that installation there, with the Town of Paradise being, I mean, Town of, the city of Rolling Hills will be the immediate second city to receive that, so it is the absolute priority either way, right? We're going to prioritize that to do that. But again, they're independently, in my opinion, they're very different modalities. They're just like the third modality of EMNS.
And I don't believe you have the answer to this unless you do, but real estate, does this decrease the home value?
In my opinion, you know, I live and see these sirens all the time. I drove in and I had to look around like three or four times to see where the siren was. I will tell you that before I got into the siren business, I would drive around, and here's what I mean by that, like if you're looking for it, you're going to see it. These sirens are in thousands of communities worldwide, and in fact, you know, depending on what's been happening here, and if you see the stories coming out of Los Angeles and everything else, the Town of Paradise, the residents did not want to move back until the sirens were installed. The mayor himself has gone on TV and said that the outdoor, the notification system is the reason why the residents are moving back to the Town of Paradise. The reality is, is it is that not only have we not seen any evidence of reduction in home values, but to me, a safer city is a city that more people want to live in.
And we'll go into the topographical, the topography maps and how if it's possible to just only have a street view, and you can go into why you have a map that demonstrates a topography versus a map that doesn't have it. We'll jump into that in just a moment. But also, can you hide it with an actual tree? And I believe that's kind of what happened with the fire station. We hid it behind trees and sunk it lower, which now has impacted the propagation and why we're here today.
Right, the trees are an obstruction, just like a wall, just like anything else, right? So, the more dense that the immediate surrounding area of a tower is, the less effective the speakers become. Think about if you just take your speakerphone and just kind of put it up against your body, right, or you have something against it, immediately you're going to notice an impact and a reduction in sound, and the speakers or the sirens are the same way.
Are the poles like lightning rods?
They're not, and you know, again, this is definitely a huge debate that you can go online and decide. The realities is that lightning is going to hit where lightning wants to hit. The difference being is that the siren is designed to not only withstand it, but to safely bring that lightning to ground. And so, in our opinion, no.
Okay, and then if we install the three, maybe four, are we going to, in the future, foresee potential additional poles being installed?
That's a loaded question. Okay, so, based off of our current modeling and the testing that we've done, and I'm happy to clarify some of the testing, we are confident that we are going to be able to provide the city based off of this information here, and this is a very conservative model. It's not, it's not the kind of best-case scenario, it's not the worst-case scenario, but it's also a very representative because of the data collection that we did leading up to this earlier this year. The realities are, is that things could change. If you have a significant, and I don't, I'm going to say most likely not, but there may be a chance that you may need to add additional towers in the future down the road. Topography changes, additional construction, and weather conditions could require that. So, I don't, I don't want to be on the record saying as no, never, but we are confident based off of all of this, that this should provide that level of coverage that the city needs and requires.
And Mayor, that concludes these questions, but I'm going to allow the opportunity for guys to talk about, if that's okay, the propagation, are you okay with that?
Well, you know, I'm okay with that, but I think part of what we should be able to do is if we can get a list of where we looked, whether it's just, you know, streets, if we have that list available, not today, but whatever for everybody, and/or if they're just dots on a map, if you already have them in there. I know you got to turn certain things off, but if everyone could get a PDF of something like that, then it's easier to zoom in and you can really see what's kind of going on.
Right.
Because I think people really want to look at it and study it versus quickly going through it and what that's going to be.
Absolutely, and look, and previous to the first installation, we did a very comprehensive sound planning study, right, where we had our engineers out here for several days, maybe even a couple of weeks, collecting data from all different aspects. I want to clarify that the testing that we did over the course of the last year or so has been not testing 50-foot poles in their place. There exists no mechanism for us to put a temporary 50-foot pole up, right? From a wind structure, this will have to be an 18-wheeler-sized vehicle, and so the trailer that we have does about 30 to 35 feet, which, you know, from a topography perspective, does not provide us with a one-for-one, and so that is not the approach we took. The approach we took is to do it the other way around. Using the existing three poles that you have today, we activated the existing poles and took measurements from things, from specific areas from a physics perspective, right? So, for example, we know that a speaker at 10% volume can play this much distance, and that's verifiable. And we also know from the laws of physics that at 20% volume, it extends the distance by another six feet, and at 30%, it's another six feet. And so, that is modeling that can be replicated from zero to 200 feet, and so that is then continued through, again, the, just the simple laws of physics of how sound waves travel, and so we're able to do that. So, when we went out and did our testing, part of it was we had individual speakers, and we said, okay, what does, what would happen if we put a single speaker here to point it down into this valley? Would that increase the decibel levels to a point where that could be acceptable? Because if it did, we wanted to propose that, right? A single speaker 15 feet high pointing down into a valley? It didn't, right? It didn't have the impact we needed it to have because it wasn't additive enough. The siren was doing, the existing siren was doing the vast majority of the work, and that one additional siren was not impactful enough. Now, one of the things that we did is we went out and we measured using a sound pressure level, an SPL meter, the sound pressure level that when a siren was activated individually, and then when they were all activated together. And so, we plotted that information into the software, which then adjusted its calculations as estimations. At the end of the day, yes, it is a software, and it has, it is prone to error like anything else. Just like my team may be prone to error, and you know, say that this is, they measured it at 50 feet, but they measured it at 49 feet, right? We're not going to get past that, we're not going to be perfect. None of us are, none of our competitors are, none of us will be. But I can tell you is that we as a team, along with the city manager and the city council, our entire goal is to provide you with the tools that you need to safely evacuate or to hunker down in place in that emergency, and we're not going to rest until we do that. So, we're not asking for more money, I want to make sure it's clear. The additional sirens we're proposing are at a cost, and we are covering the cost of labor. We're asking the city to cover the cost of materials, the money that I'm going to be pulling out of my pocket to pay for them, and I'm not asking you for anything else. And that is because we understand that some of the concessions that maybe we could have stopped and said no to, which, looking back, maybe we could have found that time, but the concessions led us to a situation where we have residents that are unhappy, and me as a business owner, I could have made a lot more money making Snapchat filters and Instagram filters for people and selling those for $1.99 than doing this. So, I need you to truly trust in that, and whatever it takes for us to build that trust within the community and be able to provide you guys with the information and details and knowledge and experience and proprietary information or not, we are happy to do it. Let us know what it is that you need from us to rest assured that we are taking the residents, the city, best interest at our here. We're happy to prove that, because that is our only goal here.
Thank you. So, I got other questions, it's just the propagation.
Yeah, so, if we can, if you work with Karina and staff, whichever one you work with, is figure out how we can get a map of some sort so they can see what that looks like, because I see when you zoom in, they appear, so we can find something that we can share, that would be great.
Absolutely.
All right, and then, okay, so what's?
Sure.
I had a question about what he said. The information you said in Paradise that you've been finding that placing the gateways, and I wasn't sure where they were placed, gets you eight to 10 feet of additional coverage, and then there was also, I don't know if that's related to, you mentioned a special text and SMS and other communication system that the poles could provide that would be individual to Rolling Hills, that even if the cell towers cut out, you would get the ability on your phone to be able to communicate.
Not quite, so I think you might have mixed them up just a little bit. What we're saying is the safe unit, by installing the gateways on the existing sirens, the safe unit becomes a method for you to be able to communicate with the residents when the cell towers go down, right? So, when the cell towers go down, then you're going to have the ability to send out these alerts through the safety network along with your sirens. That's the critical infrastructure that I'm saying that is now within your purview versus SMS and phone calls are not in our control. At the end of the day, we send a command to Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, T-Mobile and say, send this notification to all these folks, and as long as their towers work, they'll send it, but if their towers aren't working, they're not going.
And if you remember the last time during the Palisades fires, we were getting evacuation alerts.
Right.
That weren't for us. This is only for us, so that's another advantage. So, when you get it, you know it came from us.
And to clarify, on the gateways, it's seven to 10, eight to 10 miles in coverage per gateway?
So, I don't understand, if the coverage is based on the mesh that you were talking about, but if one has a coverage of seven to eight miles, how would one unit not?
It's the elevation, right? RF propagation, just like sound propagation, is going to go out in the direction that the antennas are propagating it. So, if we have 360-degree antennas, for example, they're going to propagate east to west, so if they're on the top of a valley, if you're down at the bottom, if you're at the top of the valley, it's not going to receive the notification. So, we're going to have to put them in different areas in order to ensure propagation around the entire, so if you guys were flat, a single gateway would do the trick. You'd be fine, right? If you were out in the desert at 29 Palms, for example, one of them. One gateway, three sirens, and every single person here would be, instead would be here telling everybody to stop testing this thing at noon because we're sleeping.
But the Paradise is relatively flat, isn't it?
No.
This has a very, there's a lot of terrain.
The coverage there?
The coverage there is doing well right now, but also I want to point out, and I hate to say this, but they also have a significant reduction in the number of trees, right, because of the wildfires. And so, those obstructions are not there right now, and we're planning and preparing for the growth of those trees over the years, right, and we're going to keep an eye on them. But yeah, so right now, it's wide open fields. And I'd like to point out that all of their sirens are located right in the main areas. We installed a 55-foot, no, a 65-foot siren out there that's covered in pine trees, and there was a family that was on vacation, and then they came back, and when we tested it, they came out of their house and said, I didn't even know that was there. I said, hold on, can I take a picture and a video of you saying this, because I'd like to show this? The reality is, is that it is, there are differences between the terrains right now, but there, if you think about the perspective, like your roads are clear, right? The trees are on either sides of the roads. If you, if we were to propagate and install the towers in the original locations, which are among major intersections, sound propagation would be significantly easier and better because we're not fighting all the terrain. And so, these are the types of.
You good?
I wasn't, go ahead.
I just got a time problem, Jim.
I know.
Okay, so, all right, so thank you very much. So then, from our standpoint, we got a couple of choices here. There's two things. We're still, we still don't have, we still don't have where we're talking about on the backside. And when do you think we're going to have that?
So, we have, I apologize, you want to go ahead? We have, Ringbit has not been pulled off the table, Ringbit's still there. And based on our presentation and information that HQE has shared and presented this evening is that the Ringbit location, it's one pole, and it's optimal coverage and propagation, so you still only would need three. The cul-de-sac is located to as close as you can get to a siren pole, and the other location is still on Ringbit. If you go out away from the cul-de-sac, it would be either corners. To be more specific, one corner has mailboxes and the other does not, but it's these immediate corners, not across the street. Those are the two locations. Either one of those locations would still achieve the propagation that you need, but that again, it's only one pole. The other two locations that staff worked closely with the previous manager and now working with Frank, who is here, is the locations of Southfield Flying Main and placing one in the tri, the flying triangle before you get to Rensselaer Road. So, you're kind of looking on the outskirts of that, but it would have coverage for the triangle, but you would still, and now you would are required to get two poles, so you'd have a total of four. So, we need direction from the city council this evening on one, authorizing the CM to proceed and seek easement licensing from RHCA, Upper Blackwater, Portuguese Bend Road, and Chesterfield cul-de-sac. As you heard today, having those two additional locations will greatly benefit them to be able to move on with the project. It would not necessarily impact the decision on where your third and potential fourth would be, but if you lock in two locations, it allows them to know that those are locked in and provide the final component of the other potential one and/or two. We already know Ringbit is covered, it provides all of that. It's just determining if you're going to do Flying Triangle and now Southfield Flying Main in lieu of the Ringbit, and whether or not you want to proceed with this camouflage idea. Those are the things that we were seeking from city council this evening.
Can I just quickly say something about the camouflage? The only reason camouflage ever came up is I was asked that question, and just like we've tried to address every question that's come up, I proposed it to them. It was never a serious consideration, anything that we were suggesting, and as we've found out more about it, not only is it expensive, we wouldn't, didn't want a palm tree, since we don't like palm trees. So, all the other trees that have branches and things on them can also, if winds come along and things like that, it was explained it can get unsteady and kite and things like that. So, that was just a question that was asked and answered, so.
Okay, so for me is, when we go to the HOA for that next step, to me, I'd rather have all our ducks in a row and know what the heck we're doing, and so we're not piecemealing it to them, and then piecemealing it to them. So, to me, can we get the stakes like we did on this side, so we have a better understanding, so the residents on that side know what's going on too? So that way, we're having this conversation holistically across the entire thing, because we keep talking about, you know, oh, it's here, and I know where that area is, but where is that area? So, if we can get those, so we can go out and look at it again, I think that's the best way to do it, so then we can narrow this down to what it actually is and go step by step, all in one shot. Because I don't really want to prove one thing, or do this and then that, and then this doesn't work with this, and then if we were to move that over here, this could have worked better. I'd rather figure this out on where is it going to be, make sure that all works together so we don't make a decision now and then have to backtrack and go down that path. That's to me how I want to do it. Let's go a different direction, we can go that way.
Well, I think there was a lot of concern about, does the safe network work, and it's a relay-type system. It appears to me that if you were to approve the Upper Blackwater, Portuguese Bend triangle, and they were to get that at the 50-foot height end, that the north and west side of the city would be pretty well covered, and we could then introduce the safe network to that part of the city with a very high likelihood of success. I think that the Chesterfield cul-de-sac looks, when we were there, it's kind of too high, quite honestly, and so perhaps looking at smaller and more numerous poles in that area might be better. But, I mean, if you want to do it all at once, it's fine, but I don't see why we can't do bits at a time, and I think that Upper Blackwater, Portuguese Bend pole is one of the Bend Pole is one of the ones in the city that won't be as intrusive as others. And, you know, if people saw the indoor safe network combined with the outdoor siren, which obviously they, we want these multiple systems to work in synergy, because that's the best possible way of doing this, that the rest of the city might be more enthusiastic. And they say, I want my safe thing. How come the west and the north side got it and we didn't? Well, because you haven't got enough poles, ain't going to work. And then they might be more keen on, on poles, not certainly not 50-foot ones in the middle of our view, but more numerous smaller ones. That's, that was my thinking.
I, I have, well, first of all, with all due respect, I really appreciate you coming out tonight. And I also appreciate all the work that you've done.
Right.
With and for the city for the last, you know, six years. And while I supported the system from its inception, after, it took a lot just to get the three poles in. I mean, we, we, we didn't get as much, as many objections for the three poles that we have now as we're getting, as we expanded it. I think, as I remember it, we kind of sold it on our residents that that was it, we're going to put three poles in. And I know that you were reduced from your, you know, original request for nine down to three. It was my understanding at the time that even though that was imposed upon you, that was still going to cover the city as per the contract, per the agreement, at 70 decibels. I have ongoing concerns that we can add poles now, and we're talking about, well, maybe this, maybe that. And, you know, if this doesn't work, then we'll add something else. And it's got to the point where, frankly, it's, it's divided the city, some residents within the city, beyond what I think, and don't get me wrong, I understand the safety benefit, but if you take that and, and complement it with the safe network, and I get the limitations on that, too. I heard, I heard the description tonight, or descriptions of the system tonight that I didn't fully understand until tonight about how the mesh system works. So if only one or two get it, then it may not propagate through the rest of the city. There's just so much uncertainty and so much cost associated with this. I'm really struggling to be supportive of adding additional poles.
Well, I mean, as you know, we've been doing this since 2019. And this group is new to the process, but they should be aware that we had very, very aggressive support for this siren system by the block captain organization, with multiple meetings with large numbers of people. I got to tell you, I wasn't totally keen on it at first, because I was concerned about the aesthetics and the movement among the residents. And then when they did do the test, the one test that they did, those who could hear it were very supportive, even more so. So now we're having, as we said, some divisiveness, but the vast majority of people coming here have been very aggressively supporting it. I mean, it changed my tune, and then I got more people calling, and so. And we do know in other places, they work. You live in the Midwest, and you have a tornado thing. I've been in one, it works. I have a friend who's up in Oregon, the Sonomy system, when that went off recently, they didn't have big sun, it worked. I lived in Houston, the hurricane system, they worked. So all the talk about doesn't work is not true. And I can tell you, it's just not true. Now, indoors versus outdoors, yeah, I can see you need both, because we're not going to have so loud. But now they're providing that for us. And then there's also the countywide system and the cell system, which doesn't work, I don't know. So I think that the arguments that it doesn't work are not accurate. The arguments that it could interfere with people's views and aesthetics and that is accurate, and we need to try to mitigate that. And that's what I want to do. I want it so it's providing as much redundancy and synergy for the residents without interfering with people's quality of life. And that's what we've been doing, and I don't think we need to stop doing that. But I think we got one pole that would work. And I think the other ones, as they're done right now, wouldn't. And I don't see much point in pursuing a 50-foot pole in Chesterfield, which I know I'm never going to vote for. And I personally asked for the, I was the one who asked for, could we do a 40-foot? Because I saw the marks, and 40 is far less offensive than the 50. And, because you can see the red marks. And maybe 30 in two spots. And the fact that it's a little more expensive to add a few poles, what's this versus the cost if your house burns down? You know, your house burns down, you're just out of luck. And you see the people who are trying to rebuild in Palisades, it ain't happening. And the states that they're going to help make it faster, it ain't happening. I have worked with a lot of people who live in that area, and I don't know if they're ever going to get to live there. So you talk about your property values, burns down, and your property values goes through the basement. So I think that's a lot of answers. I'm talking too much, I apologize.
No, no, it's okay. Is, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd have a lot of agreement with what council member Black has said, because I do hear a lot of resistance towards the, the poles that are on Chesterfield versus also the one on Ringbit. We, that was another meeting you missed. But anyway, the, the issues I have, I mean, we have a system now, thankfully, due to monies that we got from the state, that basically is a amazing system, Pano AI, that, that will catch wildfires in its incipience, and it actually benefits Rolling Hills. So we're going to be getting, like, some really instant notifications, much like it has a puff of smoke. And, and they verify with humans as to whether this is some kind of people that are barbecuing or, or it's a real fire. So that, to me, can maybe mitigates as much of the concerns we had before. They had that Pano AI video system with, with AI intelligence initially, and then verification. But the other thing is, I really, I mean, it's, I think the safe units sound like they're amazing, and especially you can take it with you as you're evacuating. That seems to be very much an important device to have. And the idea that it piggybacks or repeats, you know, acts as a repeater to extend the signal, amazing even. That's, that's even better. I would like to, like, as council member Black mentioned, you know, I think that when people see the results, it becomes easier. And I don't know what we can do to convince people to pop for 100 bucks, you know what I mean? That seems very minor for people in our community, but they do need to put it in there, especially given the concerns you raised, that it doesn't work effectively if you can't create the mesh. So I would be more in favor of just maybe trying that one pole, but I also am sensitive to the fact that you want to do as many poles as possible, but to try to, and to give it to the area that's not covered, even with our three poles, and see if we get people to say, try this, this system first, and then let's, that's, we could, then we have a better idea, because it's kind of hard for me, as a council member, to know, is this, is this pole really necessary, or will the safe system really cover it for the majority of the time when people are in their homes? Because you have people with triple-pane windows, and they're not going to hear that, that time around the outside. But those are my, my thoughts.
And here's just, and we'll do something right here. But my thing is, there's 100,000 people in Palos Verdes, all the cities together. Everyone's been to the Rose Bowl for a Rose Bowl game when it's packed, and everyone leaves at the end of the game. Takes you an hour to get out of the valley, takes you an hour and a half to get out of the valley. We have, we pay for, with this new AI technology, it's honestly, it's amazing. It spots fires from Catalina on the hill. It spots the, it's great.
Our city, yeah.
We will hear about it just as fast as the other cities will hear about it. We will be the only ones who can communicate directly with our, with our residents. And let me tell you, a five-minute head start, a 10-minute head start is going to be super important. Because Jim's talking about, you know, hey, and the burns down, whatever. I'm not concerned about the house burned down. It's, yes, it's going to destroy all your property values. I'm concerned about dead people, okay? That, to me, is the reason we're doing this. And we want to make sure that we can protect everyone as best we can. And all the layers are there. And yes, I mean, I'm with you that it was taller than I thought it was going to be when we were standing there. But right behind it is a giant power pole with a transformer on it. And over, I mean, I got the, I live on my street, I have these giant poles. It's just what it is. So we're going to try our damnedest to figure out what this is, but that's really what the focus is, and all these layers. And we're not stopping the safe network. They're going to start installing it, and it's going to get start to use. And we're going to try to find solutions that work as best we can with everybody. And everyone's going to be, hopefully, as happy as we can make it. So do you have anything you want to add?
Well, just quickly, the, you know, we've talked a lot about the belt and suspenders. I don't want to be in a position of trying to decide when the disaster is going to happen, when an emergency is going to happen, if people are going to be in their home, are they going to be out riding on the trails? Are they going to be in their car, taking their kids to school? I, I'm a little uncomfortable with trying to make a choice of this technology or that technology. And so to me, that isn't the, the choice. We are going to go ahead, that's a given. We're going to go ahead with the safe network, so we know we'll get the inside coverage. On the outside coverage, I agree with Pat. It's been a little frustrating. We thought we were going to get, I admit, when we first thought we were talking about an outdoor siren system, I thought an outdoor siren system meant that the sirens were outdoors. I didn't realize when we first went down this road that we were talking about that it was outdoor coverage. So what, you know, once we learned that, and this has been a learning process through the, the whole thing, I do know that every time we have pushed back or tried to ask HQE to do something different than what their recommendation was to start off with, the results have not been good. They've been less than satisfactory. So I'm, I'm kind of hesitant to say, well, you know, let's try doing eight poles, you know, back like where we were to begin with. We're not going to be able, they're not going to find other people that are going to want the poles in front of their house any more than the existing people want the poles in front of their house. We all live here in Rolling Hills. We live here in part because we love our views. We love the foliage that, and vegetation that we have. Some of us even offered to put, you could put the pole on our own property. But our properties weren't suitable, whether it was access or that we were down below, you know, blockage above it. So I think we're all trying to look for that. I am not cavalier about people's views. I'm not cavalier about my views. But it's, views are a very high priority, but the safety of the community, to me, is above the views. I agree with the comments that were made, you know, and maybe if we can pick one location and go forward with that, I understand that. I know in Laguna and places like that, where they implemented their siren system in stages, the people who were in stage three and four, they're going, come on, hurry up, hurry up. We want our sirens. And, you know, people in Laguna like their views and things, too, but they saw the benefit of having the system. I do have concerns, though, that if we say, well, let's just do one. I think HQE, who has been a very good partner through this whole process with us, if we think we're ultimately committed to having the outdoor siren system, which is what we started off with to begin with, to be used in case there is no cell service and there is no electricity, that was, that is what this was for. And we hoped we'd never have to use it. But if we're ultimately think that we're, we know that the indoor, the safe network's not going to give us the outdoor coverage. So if we're committed to having the outdoor coverage, we know we're going to need more than one more pole. Could we make, so that HQE can start planning and knowing what we're expecting, even if we leave the locations, the other two locations, to be determined as we do some more, you know, modeling and things, could we at least make, enter into an agreement to go forward with the three locations, with maybe one location determined and two to be determined very soon, to get them so that they can start ordering what they need?
Okay, so I think this is what we're doing, is we're going to make a motion here that we're looking at the one pole, which is at least out of everyone's views. I know your concerns, and we'll have to figure out how we work around those things. That pole at least makes sense. We're also big kids. If this drives the dollars, you're being very generous about your part. We're not stupid. So if it needs to change the equation a little bit, we're happy to participate, because that's only fair. Is, I think we're saying is that the 50 feet is unreasonably tall over on Chesterfield. So that means we have to put one pole over here and a different pole over there. I think we should be looking at that as well. And I know this sucks for you guys trying to figure this out. But what we're basically saying is, we're either looking at is two poles on the backside or one, and we're going to have to see how that works. And then we're probably talking now about, instead of one pole here, which is still, still possible, but maybe two poles on this side, on that corner over there, and see what that looks like, and see if we can solve it from there. I think those are the, to me, the workable scenarios right now, all right? And so I think that's the path we should go down. You're going to install the safe network, and, and when we get to that, we can help get it to where the houses need to be. If you could also draw a circle around and say, these are the ones that work the best. We'll get those people involved, and we'll get them to start buying them, so we can make that work properly, and we'll go from there.
So you're just directing staff, then?
Yeah, can I just, that directs staff, and we just be there? Or do we have to vote on anything?
Sam gave an direction based on hyperresponse. Do you proceed?
Okay. Okay.
I guess the one thing, too, because it takes a while for the Rolling Hills Community Association to decide their part about whether they're going to give up easements for locations. Is there any reason why we shouldn't get that process, just to see which locations, because we already have some defined locations, are they willing to at least give an easement?
We're having those conversations, vague, rough conversation with them as we're picking spots and stuff. We're not just blindly picking spots. So we need to go back and get approval once that, once we're there. But we need to figure out, in my mind, what those pieces are. And if we can get some more of the engineering figured out here in the next month or so of what that looks like.
Okay, so now, let me go back. One, authorization for the city manager. You want us to proceed with Upper Blackwater and Portuguese Bend Road?
Yes.
Okay. And for Chesterfield cul-de-sac, you would like for us to identify additional locations, even if it includes Chesterfield at 30 feet in height, and finding three or more if it's required?
No, is if we can make that, if, if it's still there, we don't know if it's even still there, when we, if we took two poles that are a little short, that are shorter.
That's what I'm saying, so.
But you said three.
Put, he indicated it could be four to five, or depending on the location. So if we were to make him shorter, it's not going to be just one or two. It could potentially be three or four.
We need to understand that, so that way we can do an analysis from a cost standpoint and a functionality standpoint.
Item number two, protection on, provide direction on additional siren locations, looking from Ringbit, that is still one of them. Southfield and Ringbit intersection, that's another. We have to place HQ, HQE has to indicate poles, sorry, dig alert poles, so that way we can determine those. And the Flying Triangle and placing one at the Southfield Flying Main, we're going to proceed as directed to place the poles down.
Yep.
We'll have conversations with neighbors as well, provide that feedback. And we are going to say no to the camouflage.
Yes.
Correct. Okay, at this time, then city staff will take this direction. If you are in concurrence with this direction, then we can go to a vote. Mayor, I'm sorry, council member Mersh, did you have a question?
I just, do we have to vote on the authorization of, we gave direction, authorize the Portuguese Bend? Do we need to vote on matters? Is just direction enough?
Hold on, we're fine. Then I make a motion that we do what you just said. Someone want to second it?
Second.
Okay, we're going to vote. Roll call. Councilmember Mersh.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
No.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Terringer.
Yes.
Mayor Piper.
Yes.
Okay, this will continue another time. Thank you for coming. And we'll try to get you guys more information as we keep working through it. Okay, all right, we're going to go on to.
Of course, we want a very safe area, of course, but what my point is trying to be at the location, fully equipped, I guess, much better. So, the point about this is.
We're gonna go quickly to this so Jim can leave. Approval of the traffic commission appointee completed the current term of January 2024 and expiring on January 1, 2028. Does someone wanna make a motion?
I, I would make a motion that we appoint resident Hawkins with provision to be the accused from any and all issues pertaining to Crest Road.
Wanna second it? Was that a second?
No, I'm just asking clarification.
Crest Road?
I mean.
Any and all issues pertaining to Crest Road. That's the motion.
Okay, that dies, so we're gonna go on to.
Is it gonna be the, the section that he's on or the whole road?
Crest Road.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll make, I'll second his motion for discussion on it.
Okay, we're gonna, does it, we're, any reason to discuss? Nothing? Then we're, it's roll call? Councilmember Mersch.
No.
Wilson.
No.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Protam Derringer.
I'll say yes.
And Mayor Piper. No. All right.
I would make a motion.
Okay.
Or do you want someone else?
No, you can do it.
That we appoint our other resident, his name I can't recall, for the traffic commission remaining term.
Second.
All right, roll call. Uh, Councilmember Mersch.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Derringer.
I'll say no.
Mayor Piper. Yes. All right. Thanks, Jim. Good luck on your surgery tomorrow. Okay. Feel like tension with Jim gone, it's just lowered now? Okay. All right. Now, we're gonna go on to 14A, verbal update of the Rolling Hills Tennis Court ADA improvements.
Good evening, mayor and council. The city manager and I will tag team on this item. So, just some quick updates. In the past few weeks, the project had started. If you have walked over, looked at the tennis courts, you'll see that demolition has been done. This week, we are starting the grading process. There is some additional foliage along the west side of the property adjacent to the Lebs' house that will be starting to get removed tomorrow, just based on the plans. The RHCA has been working in close partnership with us on this, communicating with the Lebs', and we are clearly, of course, trying to be very judicious in what needs to be removed versus, you know, to ensure their privacy and limitation of potential sound. Naturally, if there are any issues down the line, the RHCA and the city can work with the Lebs' to, to deal with that. As part of that process, part of the staking process for grading and looking at where that foliage needed to be cut away, staff met onsite last Friday with Bergman, with Fidelity, and with the RHCA, and recognized that there was some additional foliage at the southwest end of the project that might have been a little bit more intrusive on their potential privacy and whatnot, including the removal of the giant eucalyptus tree. In looking at the drawings and talking with the RHCA, some of the original planned DG area over there, which had been designed by Debbie Ritchie Bray as part of the process, it was determined through discussions and a site walk that we could actually cut back the scope of the project there by about 10 feet, and that, that what was going to be, or what was originally proposed as a viewing section for a tennis court and potential tennis, you know, playoff-type scenarios was not necessarily needed in that full capacity, and that could actually prevent both that eucalyptus and a variety of that foliage back there being cut away. With that said, staff in coordination with the association had Dan Bolton make some amendments to the existing plans where the, now a planter and about 10 feet of the DG will be removed and, and therefore, we won't have to cut into the foliage at that, at that area. With that said, as I said earlier, you'll start to see them removing that, starting tomorrow. Grading and building of the retaining walls will be starting later this week. We anticipate about six to eight weeks of grading work to transpire after that. There is some more minor, I would say, demolition or excavation of low voltage wires and existing irrigation that will come out as a part of that process. And, and then, what I'm gonna hand over to the city manager in a second is our approach with, working with the, the tennis courts club and the president. We, we did have a meeting a few weeks ago, and we have been exploring ways to potentially gain safe access to the site. That clearly won't happen, at least for the six weeks of the grading process, just due to, due to the machinery and the work being done. But we did explore three options, and I'll hand it over to city manager Bonyalas to explain who we met with and why and, and the outcomes of those.
So.
Sure.
Six to eight weeks from now-ish, what's gonna be done?
The grading will be done. The retaining walls, I believe, should be completed at that point, and then, right around that time is where the flatwork should, should begin to be laid, the concrete and whatnot.
The ramps and stuff. Okay.
I know, I don't know very much about grading, but what are they using, a teaspoon? I mean, six to eight weeks for grading?
Well, I, I am definitely no expert, but there, there are different, there are different phases of, there's different phases of the grading. So, there's fine grading, there's, there's compaction, then there's additional grading, so.
He's saying retaining, he's saying retaining walls as well. So, what they're gonna do first is they're gonna get in there and they're gonna, now they've ripped everything out, now they're gonna go in and get close with a bulldozer or, or a little tractor, because it's so small in there.
They're smaller, we are using smaller machinery just as a result of the locations. Yes.
And then from there, then we got retaining walls. Once we get retaining walls, then we can start.
I promise we will move dirt with at least a quarter cup.
Did anybody have any comments or objections to the change in plans? I mean, was everybody just happy with that?
I, I think because it was a DG area and because it really didn't have any broad impact on the accessibility to the site or the future cabana components that the RHCA will be doing, and it really is at the perimeter of the, the southwest side, it didn't really make a difference for access or, not only to the site, but to the, to the Court One west side entrance.
Well, I'm sure it benefits the Lebs', you know, which is great, but if it's at the expense of some other group or organization, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we just did a change in plans and everything's.
Yeah, the, the association team felt like that aspect of the design that had been done was more of an arbitrary thing versus like an absolute need and necessity.
Just don't want somebody coming up to me later and saying, why did you do that?
All right. We're gonna get there in a second. Go ahead.
Sure. The, we have been exploring and meeting with, first we started off with our insurance providers, S.J.P.I.A., to work around with, creating options to be able to have access to the gate, the gates on either, on opposite ends of Courts One, Two, and Three. And they understand the complexities behind this. Ultimately, for them, they would prefer that the city wait until the construction has been completed, just to ensure that there's no additional liability taken on from the city, the association, and/or those who are doing the construction on our behalf. And then, just looking at it as a broad, big picture, what can we do to ensure that we can still get this done and not take on any additional injuries or whatnot? So, what they did share with us is that if there is a location that is suitable in which there is access, they would be willing to work with the board by asking them to ensure that, ensure the individuals that will be conducting the actual construction, which is opening the gate and maybe potentially creating a step if needed, that they're insured and that they indemnify the city, the association, but also those who are conducting the construction. I did ask Mike Dorda for feedback. I don't have it as of yet. He came out and walked the entire area. He did recommend that the RHE access point, if you recall, there was an entry point just behind the bus stop, would be the most ideal, simply because there is already a clear pathway to enter that area. There were some caveats to ensure that if you do create an access point by removing foliage or opening that gate entry, you know, to keep in mind that there still requires, if there is a step, you need to ensure that there's a safe step to enter the courts. If the gate is gonna open, they recommend that it opens inward as opposed to outward, just to ensure that there's that extra step of entering the courts. So, the most feasible, it sounded like it would be the RHE side. When we ran, I ran it through the California Joint Powers Authority, they also agreed if we were to consider that, the city council would ultimately have to approve the, you know, the design plans and a discussion on allowing this to happen. But there needs to be a secured gate, a lock, that it's locked during times that it's not operational, and that there is an understanding that it is a public accessible area, and it's a pathway that if the public wanted to enter or could enter, there's a possibility of that occurring. But really seeking that whoever does the construction, the gate and/or the steps to the actual court itself are insured. And I just recently sent that information out to the board president, indicating these are the kind of areas that they wanna make sure that whoever's doing the work is insured and the indemnify the various parties, the city, the association, and the construction company, just that we're on the same page. Vanessa, our traffic engineer, came out, and she also agreed that the, the most feasible location would be the entry through RHE, because again, there's a pathway there. She did provide, provide an assessment of just outside the pine trees, I'm sorry, the palm trees, and same thing with the palm trees, there needs to be insure, there needs to be insurance provided for that, that all the parties involved are aware that there's gonna be construction in there as well. And the reason why is because it's gonna require signage, striping, it needs to be ADA compliant, and there needs to be a clear sight distance improvements for those that are coming out from the palm tree, that they don't get hit by a car. So, you wanna create enough space of cutting out into the fence to ensure that that's, that's there and they're not gonna run into any issues. So, again, it is a lot more feasible to go through the RHE side. I know it'll probably come up in discussion, the board president did meet with RHE. I reached out to the city manager and the community development director to ensure that they were able to provide any additional information as it pertains to their encroachment permits, if they require insurance and whatnot, but it sounds like it would be actually feasible and not required to have the encroachment permit issued to them, as long as they do not make any changes to the footprint that currently exists. So, if they create a pathway to the actual tennis courts as they walk around the bus stop, it will require to go through the encroachment, but also meeting the ADA compliance for the city. But because it's not disturbed, they wanna keep it as is. So, it does, based on our conversations, the RHE side is the most feasible and could be workable, and just ensuring that we get all the documents we, we need and require from those who are gonna be conducting the construction from Courts Two and Three. So, that's what I have for right now. At this time, I don't have, again, the engineer from Public Works report to give us the specifics on what the actual construction company needs or the consultant firm that's gonna be hired to open the doorways, but having those plans allows him to be able to just review it. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Okay.
I'm not sure if I missed it, but does this require a permit from RHE?
No, actually, if there is no impact to the current layout of the floor plan, they don't need to have an encroachment permit. If they decide to make changes to the pathway, then yes, they are required to have not only an encroachment permit, but whatever developments they make on that area, it's gonna require ADA compliance, and there's just a world of checklist things they have to get done.
Is it feasible to do this without a permit?
Go through the city once they hit the city property. Our city.
I know.
The line, the line between RHE is, I'm, I'm just making this part up, six feet from the fence. There's a bunch of bushes there, which are our bushes. So, then, what she's saying is, if you let them walk around, because we have a crosswalk, that solves one problem, to get across the street, and it's like, you know, the light, so you get across, you walk through the bus stop, then if you walk around and you just walk on the dirt and we don't change anything, then RHE says, you're just gonna leave it natural, then you're fine. This is my interpretation, so if I'm wrong, someone's correct me.
That's.
Then, you get to there, then you gotta cut a big enough hole through all the plants. There's a drainage little curb between the court and the outside edge that you have to make into steps, then you have to put a.
Well, that's not ADA accessible, then.
Well, or maybe we put a ramp in, sorry, put a ramp in from there to get up over that piece, and then you have a gate that would open in, and then we have to have it, so it's lockable, and then, long-term, I guess, lockable would probably be sufficient to making it not accessible once we're done.
Yeah, and there are components to it. That's why when Mike said if that happens to be the pathway of entry to the courts, you know, once you start, when you hire the consultant to do the work and they clear the foliage, you'll see whether or not there is a need for a step. If it's a flat enough surface where you can enter, then it's accessible. It's when you start to alter it and you, or you need to have a step, that does need to meet the expectations of having enough clearance to enter. We don't talk about ADA just yet until you kinda get there and see what you have to work with, and it may not necessarily require to have some form of ADA concept to it until you get to that point.
But what about Vanessa's requirements? How do those factor into this?
Sure. So, the alternative option was to enter right at the palm trees.
Okay, so that's a different.
And that's why she said, you know, this is gonna create, they would have to stop the construction to ensure that that pathway is created.
I thought that had to do with the RHE.
Oh, no, yeah, and there's a storm drain there that captures water, so then you have to address, how do you work around that to get.
Supply it over?
Yeah, we, we talked about that, and that's not safe, but we, we thought about different things, and that's one of the things she said. It's gonna, you're gonna spend more money and time going through this process, because it would require.
But based on what I'm hearing, can this be done in the next six months anyway?
Yeah, I, I mean, I wouldn't know unless based on who they hire to do the work.
Okay, I'm done.
Yep.
That, that was my question about how long it takes.
I'm gonna open public comment. Dustin, come on up.
Thank you, guys. Dustin McNabb, eleven to our itself. Also, I am the president of the courts club, and I came here with one issue, but now I have two. The first is Christian's comment. I would first like to strongly request that in the future, any changes made to the plan that we've all agreed upon are run by the cities, the citizens of this city. We agreed to the plan, and now you guys are changing it without even communicating? What happened to basic communication from the council or staff to simply the courts club? Isn't that a simple thing to do, to pick up a frickin' phone? Write an email? Drop me a text? I communicate in a number of different ways, but you guys have failed to communicate on a number of different occasions. This is just one of them. Communication from staff needs to improve significantly. It's terrible, just terrible. That's my first issue. So, the second one is, I do appreciate staff's taking the time to meet with me to talk about various options for gaining interest into the tennis courts. I'm calming down. Three weeks ago, when I, I came here to talk to, about gaining access to the tennis courts, I explained that we have 400 registered tennis and pickleball players that are sitting idle or trying to find some other way to play pickleball or tennis, and they can't, unless they go down to South Bay or they go somewhere else and pay money or do something else and, or highly inconvenienced by one way or the other. And so. Um, and so that was then, and we discussed three and, and staff met with me and that was great of them to do that. Um, we're sitting here three weeks later talking about potentially three different entrances, two of which we've eliminated because of ADA requirements or possibly ADA requirements. Now we've got one over, uh, by the bus stop on the R H E, on the R H E side. I've met with, um, uh, the general manager or the city manager of R H E and I will confirm what, what, uh, what Karina has said that they said, hey, you know, if you just want to use the property, you, you want it, you don't improve it, you don't improve it, don't disturb it, don't mess with it, use it all you want. So we've got, we've got easy access right now. I need a chainsaw in 10 minutes to cut a six foot hole through the brush. And we need a fence, a fence guy to put in a gate. And then we've got access to court two and three. Sounds like a pretty easy thing to do. I don't understand why we can't just do it. That's my request to the council. We've got 400 people sitting around waiting, would love to get access to the courts. And I agreed a couple of weeks ago, maybe it's not the whole 400, maybe it's 200. But there are a number of people, a number of residents in this court that would like to have access to those tennis courts. It's an easy thing to do. We don't have to disturb any land. We have to cut a six foot hole and some brush, install a gate. We're good to go. That's my request.
Okay. So just, one, we need to communicate better, 100%. That's ridiculous. Two is, the problem is the city owns the land. All right? Any other place in civilization, except for city-owned land, you would have cut this thing, you would add a hole in it and whatever. We can't get involved because if we do, your 10-minute chainsaw, whatever, whatever's going to take six years and $400 million to cut that hole in it if the city's involved. It always is ridiculous. I mean, look how much this grading thing's costing. If we weren't involved, it's 150, $200,000 project maybe. Instead, we're paying $800,000 because the city's involved. So we're trying to get all the information we can. The R H A thing is way better than I thought it was going to be. So now we're down to what that is. Unfortunately, I get, there's a large piece of the residents that want to use this thing, totally on board with the energy that you're putting in to try to solve the problem that has now been created, is, but we cannot put the city at risk for somebody lawsuits and getting hurt, et cetera, et cetera. That's just really where the problem is. So it has to go through the process. The process got way smaller than where it was. So I totally get, if it was anywhere else, of course, bootleg it because why wouldn't you? But unfortunately, it's on our space and we can't do it.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, the, I've, I've exhausted every path that I can possibly take. I've met with R H E. I've gotten their approval. They've agreed. We're down to basically a six-foot space that's owned by the city. All I need is help from you guys to get a hole through that six-foot space.
It can't be us. It ha, it can be, I don't know if the HOA can help you or whatever that's going to be, but it can't be us. As soon as we touch it, it's going to get stupid on a super ridiculously fast level. So I don't know if they can find it, but we're going to need someone to draw plans. We will push it through approval because I don't, it's going to have to get approved by LA County, um, right down in Lomita. We're going to get it approved. We will do everything we can to get that through as quickly as possible. We're going to need some plans and then it's going to need to be a contractor with insurance, et cetera, et cetera. Maybe we can get someone who lives here, who's a contractor, who can oversee what's about to happen. But it's going to have to have plans. We're going to have to get it approved. Then we'll get you a permit. And then we're going to have to get it finished. And then once you're finished, we're going to have to have them come up and sign off that it's done to their satisfaction.
And is that something the HOA can do instead? Because that appears to be close, if not on an easement.
Uh, it's going to have, I, you're going to have to talk to them and how they work. I just know it can't be us. Because if it is us, honestly, it's, I mean, you've seen the ridiculous, how it takes us to do anything. The process in government is ridiculous. So if you can talk to them, the fact that this has gone from what I was concerned about, which was R H E's blah, blah, I mean, there was a whole bunch of things down to where we're at right now. It seems like that this could happen at a pretty good clip. It just, we got to find the right pieces to fall within the, the, the rules that we have to be as the city owning the property. And we're going to try our best to help and we'll try to communicate better because that's, you should know.
I do want to recognize and sincere apologies, we should have done a lot better on communicating, conveying the message that it occurred rather quickly and decisions were made. So truly should have done better and we'll, we'll work on that moving forward. We, we can't let this happen. So I apologize for that.
Okay. All right. So, okay, quick question.
I'm sorry. This entrance that we're talking about doing, you know, where we just come off and don't change anything. Is that making the court more vi, more visible where people that do not live here now know that gee, what's going on in there? It's a public tennis court. If that isn't, I have a concern if that's, if that's a fact. I mean, I, I do have to consider the protecting the pri, the pri, being able to keep those courts private. And maybe this, maybe what you're talking about wouldn't do that. When we were talking about the po, the pepper, the palm tree and a crosswalk and a this and a that, I'm going, oh God, you know, what, let's just go, you know, please come and visit. But may, maybe this doesn't, doesn't do that.
It will visibly be, you can see it. It'll have a gate. The gate will have a lock because then we can lock it anytime outside of normal hours. Then the question is, with, I mean, how does it get maintained from there? We honestly don't want to know.
I want to play, I want to play.
But right now, but right now, if someone came up and said, I want to play on the court on city land, the HOA can do what that is. Dustin, real quick.
Real quick, this is a temporary solution for six months, hopefully four or five months by now.
Plant a tree.
And then we put trees in front of it and we're done.
And lock it and it's gone forever.
And that was one of the, one of the requirements for the authority is, and I, I think I put that in the email, once it's, once it's done, do whatever you need to do to ensure that it is no longer accessible. Whatever that means, we, and I, I think it did share that it has to be secured and locked and not used again. It's no longer temporary. It's gone. Right now, JPA addresses it as a temporary entry to the courts and that temporary will be gone.
Well, I don't know how deep the bushes there are, but if you cut it at an angle, you can't see when you're driving by, you can't see, see through.
That's actually.
And these are great ideas and that's why the insurance company wants to make sure that when Mike gets involved and sees it and they also review it, the authority, they just want, they just want to make sure that our assets are, are insured and protected.
Okay. And then, um, big picture. And I, I'm saying this with no understanding if any of this is possible. We're still, our goal is court one, if we ever got a path to something sooner than later, right? Pickleball or?
I've solved the pickleball problem.
Okay. All right, perfect. Thank you. Because we keep talking to the, the, the construction guys and I'm just, we're trying to keep working on it. We're good.
No, then.
We're still, you know, as we move through the process, still looking for potential safe pathways to the court, if feasible.
So just so we're clear, so I can notify, I mean, we're still looking at pickleball if we can, but that's not, we're now focused predominantly on one and two, if we need to, to go on. Okay.
I just want to make sure we're, okay.
Pickleballs are good.
Then, uh, we're good. Okay. Close public comment. And someone make a motion, receive and file?
Need to receive and file.
Second.
All favor? Aye. Okay. Okay. Receive an update on California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, CALOES Volunteer Buyout Program.
Good evening again, Mayor Piper and City Council. Last, uh, since last 2000, sorry, since last, since it's late. Since late 2024, the city council has received several presentations regarding the Federal Emergency Management Agency Mitigation, Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program, with particular focus to the voluntary buyout program. Most recently, at the June 23rd, 2025 meeting, Robin Finig, Assistant Director of the Hazard Mitigation Branch at CALOES, presented on current grant funding opportunities, including preliminary information on a potential buyout program for Rolling Hills. At that time, staff was directed to work with CALOES to determine what information was required to conduct a benefit cost analysis as the first step in establishing program eligibility. Since then, city staff have worked with, worked closely with CALOES and with one homeowner who volunteered to participate in the evaluation. That homeowner completed the required information request and executed a waiver authorizing the release of property-specific data to CALOES for them to perform the benefit cost analysis in accordance with FEMA guidelines. Ultimately, CALOES determined that Rolling Hills does not qualify for the voluntary buyout program. The primary reason is that the benefit cost ratio for the proposed project was calculated at 0.83 below the minimum threshold of a point of 1.0 required by FEMA. This calculation was based on standardized FEMA-approved data inputs, including a Zillow estimate of $5 million for property value, a replacement value of $433 per square foot, uh, which is low, however, um, for the area, it is a, um, a tool that they're required to use. And tax assessor data for square footage and default project life assumptions. Because the project does not meet FEMA's cost effectiveness criteria, it is not eligible for funding under the hazard mitigation uh, grant program. In summary, staff have fully explored the applicability of this program to the city of Rolling Hills. While we are not eligible at this time, staff will continue to monitor federal and state hazard mitigation opportunities and bring forward any future programs that may benefit our community. This evening, city council is being asked to receive and file the determination letter from CALOES and direct staff to formally close out the, uh, draft notice of interest submitted in May of this year. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw the response from Robin about the cost per square foot. Does it do us any good to object or appeal that? I mean,
Right, it's, it's vastly.
What the current cost per square foot to build a home is in Rolling Hills at least.
Yeah, you're correct. I believe the average cost is about $1,200 per square foot. So, um, yeah, we did ask that question. They are, they are given a toolkit basically by FEMA.
And this is how they do it. My question was, is there, does it do us any good or is there even an opportunity to appeal a ruling like this?
I think that the only way to appeal it would be through the federal government, um, not through the state.
Which sounds like a hard no.
Well, and I think in Robin's correspondence back and forth with the applicant, you know, that was, that was kind of addressed and her talking about how she's been trying to get that changed.
No, I understand, I understand her attempt, her approach. I just wondered if there's something we could do as a, as a municipality. I, I get the comment about appealing federal government.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think is, she's going to have more juice than we are and she's getting nowhere on what this is. Um, the more apartment we tried, we went through every process we can to see if we did it and here we are. Do you have anything? You're good?
No.
I'm going to open public comment. Is there any public comment? So you know, public comment or in closed public comment? Then you just need us to receive a file and have we communicated with the two different residents that, that this is a no-go?
I thought it was just one.
Now there's another, one did it and another one was super interested. We should make sure everybody or put it somewhere on that part is just aware that this is not going to happen.
And did I understand that RPV residents haven't been funded yet either?
That's correct. They have not received any funding as of yet. And just to note, they are, um, also being assessed with the same numbers that we are. So, um, the $433 per square foot is the same number that they will be used for their projects, um, as well as the discount rate. So the discount rate changed in, uh, April of 2025. Um, because they've received no funding as of yet, they, they, that number will be used in the assessment for them as well.
Even though the city accepted their applications, so 20 or so, 22, whatever that was, that doesn't mean that they're going to meet the, the algorithm.
Yeah. Yeah.
And to answer your question, staff met and has discussed this with the two, um, individuals and, um, as part of your Lake Hall, we included without divulging the names.
I appreciate that. So thank you for doing that. But can we make sure everybody who is anywhere where land moves?
Oh, yes.
Something. So that way, if you live on Quail Ridge, you live on Centering, from, I don't know whether those align or we just tell everybody on those two, the short streets?
We're putting it in a blue newsletter. It's going to be on the website, um, as of tomorrow morning. We just wanted to wait until the information was available and presented to the city council first. But we also have Tripeppy Smith, which is our media team that's drafting that information. And I believe there is a, um,
Tripeppy.
Tripeppy Smith.
It's Tripeppy.
Tripeppy. Tripeppy, it's getting late. Tripeppy Smith, they're aware of it and they have already are working with one of our news outlets who's been following our city. So.
Perfect. Thank you. So we need a receiving file and a.
And a direct staff to formally close out the draft notice of interest.
Thank you.
I make that motion, both items. A second.
All favor? Aye.
And is anybody interested? I would like to consider sending a le, letter over the big guy's signature here, um, to her for the work that she did. I think she really went above, above and beyond trying to.
We should send her a fruit basket. Yes, we should be super nice.
At least a letter.
A letter. Letters be nice, but we should send something because honestly, we need her in a million different ways. And she was, she tried her damnedest on something that was, she didn't think was going to work and she did it anyway. So that's nice. Okay, we're now going to, uh, move on to receive a vertical, for, yeah, that too. Update on the planning department recruitment.
There. Yes, it's there. Good evening, Mayor Piper, member city council. As you are aware, after our, um, last planning director had left, we came back to city council after conducting, um, a, a study of what would be appropriate, uh, classification to run and operate the planning department. And, uh, through analysis, it was determined that in order to hire the right person for the classification, um, hiring a, a director immediately would not necessarily achieve that. However, if we were to fill the vacancy with a planning manager and establish an in-house succession plan, ultimately having the planning manager to become that director was the most appropriate way to go with filling that, uh, the incumbent's, uh, vacancy. Um, several months later, we presented to the city council, uh, a compensation study that analyzed not just the salary table for the director role, but also those for city staff across the board, inclusive of, um, the city manager as well. Through a couple of different discussions, staff met with the ad hoc team, because it was referred to the personnel ad hoc team, to come up with a salary table that would make sense for the organization based on looking at everything, not just budget, but what we produce in-house and what is done here and make it fit our city services and needs. Um, the position was flown and opened, uh, late June and it was open for a month. And that recruitment unfortunately did not, uh, attract any candidates that were eligible to move on to the interview process. It was then closed and then reopened, um, for an additional 30 days. Candidates, um, did apply, were interviewed, but none were selected for the role. Currently, we are in the third phase of the recruitment process and we have candidates that have applied and they are being reviewed and considered for early interviews occurring as early as next week. Um, more info to come and all the results of that. Um, but I do want to bring it to your attention that as I'm, I opened up the opportunity for our candidates to reach out to city staff, particularly meet with me 101 or have conversations over the phone on their interest to apply for the city. I have spoken to a little over a dozen candidates and a lot of, um, uh, decided not to apply. When asked why, it could, it was a series of salary. Um, they're currently making what the salary range is for a planning manager and/or far exceeds what the current planning manager salary table is, um, offering for the candidates. Um, this will be, at a third. Um, this will be at a third round, and I'm hoping that maybe we'll get a great candidate. If not, I will come back with what the next steps would look like, which be, which would include coming back to the City Council and discussing the salary ranges for the planning manager. Um, I also want to bring to your attention that it is, um, with very sad news that I share with you, that Stephanie Grant, um, will be leaving the city of Rolling Hills as our assistant planner, um, for an opportunity to, uh, grow in her career and lateral over to a neighboring agency. That position, um, that recruitment has started, it's underway, and we have almost a dozen candidates of those, about a good handful look great, and will be considered for an interview. That position does close in a week, so we'll see how many candidates will end up being selected that meet the qualifications and are among the most competitive for the next round, which is the interview process. So I'm hoping that that will have a better turnout, and we'll find the candidate, compared to what we're experiencing with the planning manager vacancy at this time. Um, Mayor Piper, that just kind of concludes our presentation. We, we do, oh, I forgot to add, we are also very excited. At the same time, we did hire a code compliance officer, planning technician, which, um, will be assisting the planning team with a lot of the over-the-counter permitting, C and D permits, and also develop into taking on some smaller projects that can be reviewed. Um, the current employee is Benjamin, and he'll be coming and meeting you, hopefully in a future meeting. Uh, but he's also doing code compliance. We no longer have a contractor to do that, allowing for greater use of their time and interacting and getting to know our community and understanding the code issues that we have within the city. So, he is about, uh, two, three, three weeks into his role, and, um, will be growing the other two positions in this department. There, that concludes my presentation, thank you.
Okay, uh, questions?
Not a question, but a comment. I think, I know Jim's not here to, uh, oppose my view, but I think we're gonna have to address the, uh, elephant in the room, which is the salary range that we're offering, because not only are we not able to hire, but we're not even able to retain, so something's gotta give. Just my thought.
I agree. I agree.
Anything else? Nope. B?
No.
Got that proposal? Hey, I'd like a public comments, in the public comment, we're gonna close most of them, okay? The, um, okay. It is what it is.
Does it all come back? I apologize.
David, don't?
Don't? If you find a superstar that is willing to come here, because it's a move from here to there, and we get super lucky, that's great. But if they aren't, the, that person is super important. From a liability standpoint, not really a liability, but from, uh, people are building twenty-million-dollar houses, they want to be able to ask a question that should be able to be answered. And that's gonna be super important, that we're gonna be able to find someone who's able to that. I know we're totally different than anyplace else, so it's gonna take a little bit of a learning curve, but that person's gonna have to get up to speed super fast. So if that's not a person not capable of that, don't hire them. We'll figure it out. Okay, all right, um, my last thing is, do we stop closing in, in the name of people who have passed away? Okay, I feel like it hasn't happened in a long time. Oh, hey, um, make a motion, receive and file? I'll make it. Second, all in favor? Aye. Whatever the hell, just write that down, good luck. All right, so, I guess we're just gonna
Are we gonna have, do we need, I think what we may have run into is, we were automatically, when we heard that someone had passed away, we were, you know, I have to say, oh, you know, let's adjourn in so-and-so's memory, and then we ran into a situation where somebody didn't want the meeting adjourned in their memory. So do we have to come up with some process to let staff know, and then have staff reach out? And find out if they want to do it? I mean, I think it's a nice thing to do, but
I mean
you don't ever think anybody's
But
gonna come, object to it.
I don't, I don't, this is gonna come out horrible. Is it? This, I mean, we're, we doing this thing, and we've always done that thing for, I mean, as long as I remember. But we did have someone who doesn't want it to happen. Part of me is like, and I'm thinking of somebody Pat and I know really well, which is, like, I'm trying hard not even to talk to them right now. Like, I don't know if that's the right move or not right move, but I don't know how to do this in a way, but I, I get it.
Staff can reach out.
It's unfortunate that we are getting a lot of notifications of members of our community that are passing. Um, and they are unexpected, so what staff can do is, as we receive information, we can reach out. It's, I mean, the timing is also very difficult, so we'll try to find a way that we can
Well, and, and here's the other side too, is maybe we should figure out where we stopped, and maybe it's okay to do this not, sorry, a lot of ADD going on. Is, uh, is maybe we should, maybe we do this in a month or two after, or give it more air. I mean, maybe that's part of it too, is like, oh, literally heard last night, and then we're already like, hey, can we? Maybe it should be like, hey, we know it's been a little while, we just wanna, you know, this is what we want to do. Maybe it should be, I mean, we should think about this, is it in a month afterwards, or something? Where we give it a little more air, where people can breathe? Because the person I was talking to, he, he literally doesn't know what to do right now. He's a disaster in all directions, and he's just trying to figure out the next steps. And what I don't think he needs is, you know, Benjamin knocking on his door saying, hi, I'm brand new to the city, I just wanted to double-check, did your wife, you know? So, I think we should come up with a process that makes more sense from a human standpoint than we're us trying to get on the piece of paper, because we heard last night such and such happens.
Okay.
And, and are we going to be doing multiple people then? Because we're now, you know, we haven't been doing it, so we, we've lost several residents, and in, in honor of all of them.
Yeah, well, I think, because we send a little note thing, right? So, I think the, what we do is, we'll just do it. Sometimes one, sometimes there's two, hopefully there's none, but we'll do them.
B, are you talking about catching up with, uh,
Well, I mean, we've had quite a few, since we've recognized and, and ended a meeting in honor of somebody. So that's what I'm saying, we have quite, several at this point that I, that I know of personally, but, um, so I'm just saying, there may be the first time we'll have like four, five people, you know, that have
Spread that out too.
Okay, all right, that's what I, I brought it up to, to say, is that appropriate?
If there's no urgency, I mean, if we treat it with no urgency, we can spread them out a little bit, or we can do something that makes some sense, so it's just a process.
Okay.
All right? Anything else? We're good?
Wait, wait, the meeting?
Hey, glad you're not on the list.
Okay, yeah.